Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, March 16th, 2021 meeting of the Stoughton Select Board. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders, certain provisions of the open meeting law, as well as the Governor's March 23rd order imposing strict limitations on the number of people who may gather in one place. I'm going to do a quick roll call attendance for the members of the board. Deborah Roberts.
Here.
Joseph McChrisky.
Here.
Pablo Regan.
Here.
Steve Kaby. Steve? And I am present. Typically, we open our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you just hold, I will pull up our flag. Now I ask you to please rise for the pledge if you are able. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I do believe we have Sheriff Patrick McDermott on the line. We had Sheriff McDermott on our agenda tonight for an introduction, and I would just like to move that up so that he may introduce himself, and then we can get into the meat of our agenda. So it's not bogged down by all the minutia of Stoughton, although I'm sure you'd enjoy it. But Sheriff McDermott is there. Welcome you to introduce yourself to the group, and appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you for having me, and it's great to be able to appear on the board meeting tonight, Stoughton. Certainly, I'd love to be there in person at some point in the next few months. Hopefully, we'll be back to be able to be gathering in person. Rob, I missed seeing you at the probate court. I know we've done business over the course of the last 18 years at the probate court. While I missed my tenure there, I look forward to the new venture ahead of me.
Neither one of us is old enough for you to have been registered that long.
18 years, I know. It's amazing. Good time had by all, though.
Congratulations.
But obviously, it's a great opportunity to come before you tonight to, just to basically reintroduce myself. As I said, I've been registered probate for the last 18 years for Norfolk County and representing the town of Stoughton in the Probate and Family Court. But I want to give the opportunity to come before you tonight as the new Norfolk County Sheriff to basically introduce the opportunity to how we can work hand in hand with communities like Stoughton to meet your needs. To give you a little bit of background, I'm a resident of the city of Quincy. I served for six years back in the 90s on the Quincy City Council. Became an attorney. Been an attorney for the last 20 years. And like I said, the last 18, I served as register of probate for Norfolk County over the Probate and Family Court in Canton. I've been very much involved with the communities in Norfolk County over the course of my career, and I welcome this new opportunity to serve as sheriff to bring a new perspective on public safety to the sheriff's office as well as to the town of Stoughton. My mission as a sheriff is to make sure that the sheriff's office serves as a public safety resource for Stoughton and all the 28 communities that make up Norfolk County. As we know from the past year, it's time to reconsider what we mean by the term "public safety." I want to push past what most people see as the limited understanding of what we do at the sheriff's office of just simply locking up prisoners, and expanding this to include more of a proactive approach to improving the conditions that make residents feel safer in their community, but also improve those conditions that might cause certain residents to enter into criminal activity and into the criminal justice system in the first place. Part of the ways we're going to do this is by major investment in expanding our programming and our community outreach. I campaigned on a theme of prevention, intervention, education, and hope. And we're now kind of implementing that theme that I ran on into actual practice. We're starting with opening more opportunities for residents to use our Ropes course in Brantry, which is basically the home of our youth leadership camp. We are going to be trying to, we are going to be doing a pilot program more down county to allow for more communities to take advantage of that opportunity. So we're going to be announcing a pilot program. We're not sure the location yet, but it will be this summer for our youth leadership camp somewhere in another part of the county, possibly closer to Stoughton. We want to focus on basically at-risk populations, which includes many of our juveniles in the community. We look to actively increase participation in our senior programming. I just read an article today on, you know, another victim, a senior couple that was a victimized on the town of Hingham with one of the infamous gift card scams, $17,000. And no matter how many times we hear stories like that, we know that the educational programs from a public safety perspective need to consistently be reinforced with our senior population. So we want to make sure that those programs stay alive and well. In particularly, we want to expand a program I inherited called the "Are You OK?" program. And it is a program I'm blessed to have inherited from my predecessors, started by Sheriff Bellotti back many years ago. Since I took office in January, we've already had the opportunity and the blessing to save three lives. This week alone, we saved a woman, 99 years old, who didn't respond to the automated phone system that we call people every day on. And when she didn't respond, our deputy sheriff immediately started calling her. When there was further no response, we initiated first responders and families to go to the home to find out if their loved one was okay. The woman sadly was on the floor of her bathroom, 99 years old. She was conscious, but a little disoriented. She was transported to South Shore Hospital. We believe that she is on the mend. So a third save in the last few months, and we're blessed to have that program, looking to expand it. We want to reach out to seniors in multiple languages so that we can answer the program and serve more people. We're also continuing to make our security resources of the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office more available to communities like Stoughton, including our mobile command center, which ironically I heard today is heading, it's a big mobile command center usually used for, you know, public safety, major events, but we're also used for community events. They're heading to Randolph on Saturday for a bunny parade. So go figure, we're involved in a little bit of everything. We also have our K-9 units that are often used for school demonstrations or civic demonstrations, but also from a public safety point of view, when there's a need for, whether it's a lost person or drug searches, et cetera. And we also have our continued partnerships with local law enforcement, obviously the chief in Stoughton, as well as our partnership with Metro Act, which is a regional police law enforcement partnership. Our programming is just not about stopping crime, but it's also about making sure that every resident in our county feels safe. This includes feeling safe from criminal behavior, but also feeling safe from other challenges that we do face. We all know the recent health epidemic, which we're hopefully at the end of, COVID-19. We have climate change issues, social isolation, opioid addiction, systemic racism, and many more. These threats don't simply get stopped at the town borders, so we need to work together regionally to tackle these issues head-on. At the same time, each community experiences these problems in unique ways, and because of this, there is no one-size-fits-all approach. So we want to make sure that we work with all the towns. We're uniquely situated to help coordinate responses to public safety challenges across the county. But this coordination will only be successful if it's guided by experiences and the needs of each community. As a sheriff, I want to make sure that we work closely with Stoughton to make sure that we're meeting your town's specific needs. We have the opportunity to make that lasting positive change in the county, and by partnering with towns like Stoughton, that's the first step in making that happen. Through these partnerships with the Stoughton Select Board, our local public safety officials, our police and our fire and our first responders, our human service agencies such as veterans groups, school districts, councils on aging, we can work together to tailor our public safety efforts to what works best for Stoughton. So I want to thank you for taking the time. I know you have a busy agenda tonight to let me reintroduce myself in this new role as sheriff, and so I look forward to working with you as a partner alongside with the sheriff's office to make sure that Stoughton and Norfolk County remain safe for everyone. So thank you for having me tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or comments.
Thank you, Sheriff McDermott. I appreciate you sharing that and hearing about the programs that you have in place and plan to continue. In a past life, I worked on the Shannon Grant Youth Violence and Gang Prevention Program, so I understand the importance of getting into the communities and establishing those relationships with youth and building that toward, you know, preventing any, you know, criminal justice encounters and so on and so forth. So I'm glad to hear that that's an initiative of yours. I do appreciate you being here tonight and filling us in on that, and I know Debra Blank, our assistant, has your contact information, so if you ever want to reach out, we know where to find you.
And we just met today. We're really creating a robust outreach program, and Dan Manning, who's one of my, he's the Director of External Affairs, he's on the call tonight, and he's the one that's putting together all these programs for us to reach out to the towns. And like I said, each town is unique, and so we want to hear from you as to what your needs might be and where our resources can fill in those needs.
That's excellent. Do other members of the board have any comments for Sheriff McDermott before we avail him of our meeting?
Good to see my friend Joe McChrisky. I haven't seen you in person for a while, but it's great to see you as well.
Congratulations, Sheriff. It's good to see you as well, sir. I look forward to meeting with you soon.
Thanks, Ray. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, and we'll be in touch and appreciate the outreach and hopefully continue to work together.
Have a great night. Talk soon.
All right. So moving into the additional items on the agenda, the first one tonight is citizens' requests. If a citizen has a request to make, please use the raise hand function or unmute yourself, and I will call on you. Mr. Zemanian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a question for the town manager through you. Looking for some sort of substantive understanding of what is being done about the traffic situation on Pleasant Street. Feel that I've been pretty patient with this, and I just, I'm getting sort of, you know, it's becoming tedious. I'd like to know if you have any word on it and if you know what the game plan moving forward would be.
Sergeant O'Connor, who's held up for a little while, I'm putting the counter out because of weather. So now that we've had the sides of the streets cleared out the past few weeks, he put a counter out, and he did get me some numbers. I'm looking those through. I'll present a report to you next week if you'd like.
That would be wonderful. I'm wondering if you could...
I can email you ahead, too, Mr. Zemanian.
Yeah, that's perfectly fine. It's not necessary to have it, you know, on this, although other people might want to hear it. One suggestion, if I could, I have noticed several children cross from Bento Street over to Low Avenue because they're heading down to the Dawes School. It's the intersection of Pleasant and Bento and Low. For some years, I've been hoping to get some sort of stop, barrel, or something there that would slow people down and get them to stop in that crosswalk. Crosswalk is extremely dangerous, and I could think of a former select person who's got a small brood of children that are now crossing that street on a regular basis. Lots of fun to see, but also quite scary. You know, oftentimes you find Abby going, Michael's wife, coming across with the children, or sometimes Michael himself with the children, and people don't always stop, and it's really unnerving. Something there, I'm not suggesting, you know, a permanent mechanical device, but something to remind people that there's a crosswalk there, if perhaps you could bring that to the DPW or whomever it needs to go to.
Absolutely, I can do that. And actually, it would be part of the whole thing of things that Sergeant, his email to me, he just sees some issues with signage, and signage that was inappropriate and needed to be changed, all those things collectively. So I'm looking at recommendations out there that's in the feasible, and look into adding that into the recommendations. It's very easy to put that concrete side portable, movable stops up in the middle, the little shaped child with the red flag. There are all sorts of things we can do, provided they don't impact on our vision. So there's no reason we can't take a better look at that crosswalk, make it a little bit more protected. But he had about six or seven areas that he saw some things that could be changed or fixed, signage that was just not right, things like that. So a whole host of relatively minor and probably somewhat correctable things, which is always nice when we can fix them.
Anything you can do to help us here in this area would be great. I appreciate it, and I look forward to your response. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. Any additional citizens' requests? Okay. I did receive a letter from a citizen who requested it be read into the record in the event he was unable to attend tonight, so I will do that at this time. The letter... The letter reads, "Hello, my name is Venus Precinct Two Town Meeting Member. I would request this letter to be read and put into the record at the next scheduled Select Board meeting under Citizens' Comments. I have been contacted by some concerned citizens of Prospect and Walnut Streets about early morning tractor-trailer use of Walnut Street from Prospect Street south towards Park Street, Route 27. There is a truck route sign at the top of Pleasant Street by Oakland Street that tells truck traffic to turn on Central Street one way or another. Enforcement of that sign would be of interest to the residents who have lodged the complaint with me. The proper authorities to satisfy the conditions of this area should investigate the issue." It goes on. "I would appreciate a response in a reasonable timeframe of what the possible solution would be. The concerns are certainly a quality of life issue for these citizens. I am forwarding their concerns to the Select Board and Town Manager." So I believe this is another issue that would fall in the wheelhouse of Sergeant O'Connor, so I will get this information to Dr. Grimm. Looking forward to that on, and hopefully we can address those concerns about the tractor-trailer use of Walnut Street.
Sure.
All right. There are no additional citizens' requests?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Walsh, go ahead.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Fox Street. I was listening to the sheriff. The sheriff's department did quarterly meetings at the senior center discussing various scams. Obviously, the senior center's been closed down now for over a year. His office might consider contacting SMAC and finding out if they could do a quarterly show. As from one of your previous meetings was mentioned, someone knew personally someone who'd been scammed, and they've come up with some new ones now that COVID shot's available. So this might be something that the sheriff's office might consider for seniors and anybody. Because they're calling all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I think Daniel Manning, who's with the sheriff's office, has a response to that. He might be able to address your comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Manning? I see his hand is raised, but I'm not hearing any sound, so... I'm not sure I can unmute. All right. Well, Mr. Manning, if you get your sound to work later in the meeting, we can have you address that, or if you want to send us written comments, we can share with the constituent meeting. Happy to do that as well. I will continue with the next item on the agenda, which is our Select Board comments. And then start with Mr....
No, Madam Chair, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McChrisky?
Yes, Madam Chair. I know that in different meetings, you've all heard me refer to my friend Mrs. Lewis, who was the former council on aging director some years back. But unfortunately, today I have to bring the announcement of the loss of Mrs. Lewis, who passed away on March 9th at the age of 96. This is a hard one for you to deal with me. Mrs. Lewis was married for 67 years to her wife Gabby, they called him. Her first name was John. And she's survived by her son, John Lewis Jr., who lives up in New Hampshire. She was the mother of the late Catherine Lewis Sandhouse and the late Brian K. Lewis, who was my best friend growing up into the 90s. He was the best man at my wedding, so we were very tight with this family. Mrs. Lewis and her husband Gabby moved to Stoughton in 1954 from Boston, and like a lot of folks, you know, they raise their family, contributing to their church. Mrs. Lewis and her husband volunteered at St. Mary's Home and School Association. They were both very active with the Golden Rays Drum and Bugle Corps over the past years. She was a core mother. Her husband was a quartermaster, which really kept the group together. And anyone of the people in my generation that were with the Golden Rays Drum and Bugle Corps in the day, which was sponsored by the American Legion, the American Conception, and the BFW Post, probably have saved the best years of their lives. Once her family was grown, Mrs. Lewis then became a volunteer for the Service to America program, the Vista, where she supported the elderly and those in need in Stoughton and other towns in the Old Colony Charter. As a result of those contributions, it led to the development of the Stoughton Council on Aging, where she was appointed the Director of the program. And she was recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the town of Stoughton. Her contributions laid out the foundation for the program that's still in effect today, and that's our Council on Aging. So I would ask, and I do have one more comment after, but I would ask that we share a moment of silence on behalf of the memory of Eva Lewis, and as the Select Board for the town of Stoughton and on behalf of the residents of the town, we thank her for her contributions to our town and for making a difference in Stoughton.
All right. I'd ask of those, please heed Mr. McChrisky's request and take a moment of silence from Mrs. Lewis. Thank you, Mr. McChrisky.
Madam Chair, it was a great week for me last week. Between the loss of Mrs. Lewis, I did bring to the board's attention something I was involved with recently, where a resident of our town, a senior, was almost scammed out of some money. And then unfortunately, just something recently that I just wanted to, and this is to anyone, you know, that is really listening. We all, we will all say to somebody, whether you're, you know, military personnel, police, fire, we also, you know, wonder, what are we saying thank you for? Is it just thank you for doing what you do? But I was involved with something this past week, and, you know, it kind of made me think because this was really something that, you say thank you, and I learned that one of the things I say thank you for is for the things that our firemen and our policemen see that can never be unseen. You know, whether it's a crime, whether it's, you know, some senseless tragedy, but they get out there and do their jobs every day, responding to people in need, people that are not at their best for whatever reasons, the actions of themselves, actions of another person, or whatever, crimes and so forth. So I would just ask everyone to think about that. And when you do say thank you to a fireman, a policeman, or somebody that puts their lives on the line for our country to defend our freedom, is to think about what they see. Think about what they're involved with, and then still have to come home to their own families and be that loving husband, or wife, or son, or daughter, you know, and try to be that when they see the things they see. Think about it, and next time you see somebody that puts their life on the line for our community, say thank you, and I hope it means a little bit more. So with that, I would say to everyone who puts their lives on the line to defend our country, public safety, especially our fire department and our police department, thank you for what you do, because I've seen only a fraction of what you see, and it makes me appreciate everything you do all the way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky. Mr. Regan, comments?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kaby?
Just a brief comment. I just wanted to let you guys know, last week on Tuesday, we had the day off, but I went over to the school committee and presented the letter that we had drafted and voted on. They were very appreciative, and I just want, if you did not get a chance to see it, I just want to let you know that I feel like it was, it was, it served its purpose. It definitely helped them to understand our position on South at the elementary school, and to understand that we support it entirely. So just wanted to let you guys know. I think it was overall a good message, and once again, I know Mr. McChrisky had made the motion for us to do that. I just wanted to thank him again, as the school committee did, for making that motion and pushing that along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaby. I will reserve my comments for item 13 tonight. So moving on to town manager comments. Dr. Grimm?
Thank you. Just two positives. First, I want to congratulate the board on winning a Grammy Award. I believe that just happened last week for her... And I also...
You're just breaking up a little bit, so... A little lag.
A little lag. Let me switch the network. Let me see. How's this one? Better?
That's good. Yeah, I think that's better.
That one better? Okay. And then I want to also pass along, congratulations to Matt Koshon. The Massachusetts Recreation and Park Association named him the New Professional of the Year. And as you know, Matt's our recreation director and was promoted into that after several months in an intern capacity, and having worked for the town for a little bit before that as an assistant or number two in that department. Matt was recognized for his innovation and his creative work. He'll be getting awarded a virtual meeting, so this was against recreation directors throughout the Commonwealth. And again, he was named New Professional of the Year by the Massachusetts Association. So it's great to have those kind of members of our team, and just happy to be able to put forward some good news.
That's excellent, Dr. Grimm. Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Koshon for that award as well. That rec. department's doing a lot of good work in challenging times, to say the least. So it's great to hear. All right. We will keep plugging along with our agenda. The next item is the Housing Advisory Subcommittee proposal for researching the viability of a housing trust. So I do have Mark Zemanian with us tonight, and I believe Barry Kassler. As the board may recall, we've put together the COVID-19 Housing Advisory Subcommittee, which has brought forward the proposals to use CPA funds for that assistance for responding to the COVID-19 emergency. And this group has an additional proposal to present tonight to the board for consideration regarding their role in researching the viability of a housing trust. So I will turn it over to Mr. Zemanian.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to members of the Select Board. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for listening to tonight's discussion on affordable housing trusts. Before we go any further with this discussion, I thought it would be helpful to explain what a housing trust is and what it can do for Stoughton. A local housing trust allows municipalities to collect funds for affordable housing, segregate them out of the general municipal budget into a trust fund, and use the funds for local initiatives to create and preserve affordable housing. Examples of what a housing trust can do include: provide financial support for the construction of affordable homes by private developers, be they nonprofit or for-profit; rehabilitate existing homes to convert those homes to affordable housing, such as tax-taken homes; increase affordability in new housing development projects, supplementing investments in housing to include a greater number of affordable units; develop surplus municipal land or buildings, putting them back on our tax rolls in a positive way; preserve properties faced with expiring affordability restrictions; excuse me; create programs to assist low- and moderate-income home buyers in their first purchase; create programs to help low- and moderate-income families make health and safety repairs to their home; and educate and advocate to further affordable housing initiatives. I believe Stoughton could benefit tremendously from having a housing trust for the reasons I've just mentioned. This, however, naturally led me to another question. How can housing trusts attain funding? I'd like to list a few of the ways Stoughton can benefit financially from a housing trust. Under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44... Under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), sources of funding for trusts include: the Community Preservation Act Fund; inclusionary zoning payments; negotiated developer fees; the municipality's general fund; tax title sales; payments from special bylaws or ordinances; sell-to-or-lease payments; resale of affordable units at market rate through lottery or resale agent revenue; and private donations. In most communities with housing trusts, CPA funds are the most common source of funding. In fact, many CPA communities appropriate CPA funds to their trusts in excess of the 10% minimum annual expenditure for community housing required by the CPA statute. In addition, some communities have used additional sources to increase the trust's capital. For example, Inover designated its housing trust as the recipient of the town's Home Investment Partnership Program, or the Federal Home Funds Allocation. Sudbury's Affordable Housing Trust acts as an affordable housing lottery and monitoring agent, generating revenue through compensation for those services. And Lincoln received a bequest from a local landowner to be used for affordable housing. Stoughton has an untapped resource in corporate donations. Large corporations and banks have a vast amount of money available to them for social welfare and community aid that never gets realized here in Stoughton, because we lack a mechanism in which the corporations can easily give those funds to. Creating a housing trust would give those corporate donors an outlet for their money, providing tremendous benefit to the town and its residents. Another benefit Stoughton would realize is that a trust would allow the town to more readily respond to an opportunity to purchase land for the purpose of creating affordable housing. Currently, the process of buying property, establishing a project for the property, getting approval from various boards and committees, acquiring funding from the CPC and getting it before town meeting for approval, which may or may not happen, this can all be an arduous undertaking, and it can last anywhere from six to 18 months without any guarantee of the results. A housing trust would streamline that process, bringing greater interest from developers and corporations to invest in our town. The Housing Trust Subcommittee discussed the importance of having a housing trust in Stoughton. We presented the idea of having the Emergency Housing Assistance Subcommittee take on the task of becoming the committee to build the framework for a trust in Stoughton. We brought our thoughts to the CPC on March 3, and the committee unanimously recommended to have the Subcommittee take on this process. I am here tonight to ask the Select Board for a vote of support to continue with the process of creating a housing trust for Stoughton. Recently, Barry Kessler and I, Barry being the program administrator, applied for a highly competitive grant that was offered by the Mass. Housing Partnership. We both saw an opportunity for Stoughton while reading the regular newsletters MHB sends out, and decided that having intensive help from MHB would be of great benefit to Stoughton, so we applied. Unfortunately, Stoughton did not receive the grant. However, we are being offered personalized training from MHP, which will most definitely assist in guiding us through this process. As a group of volunteers, this is a great undertaking, but one that we are excited about, and the help MHP is offering will assist us in creating a better product for Stoughton. I'd like to say that MHP's commitment to affordable housing in Massachusetts is commendable, and I look forward to working with such a dedicated group of professionals than MHP employs. Affordable housing is key to the economic engine of the community. Without affordable housing, residents of moderate income who have lived in Stoughton for many years will be forced out of their town. Seniors who grew up in Stoughton and have been invaluable members of our community will be forced to seek housing in a town they are unfamiliar with and uncomfortable in, abandoning their homes. This should not happen. Stoughton is better than that. We respect our elders and seek wisdom from their experience. To lose our seniors would be a true blow to our town, but we won't let that happen. I ask for your support tonight, and I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. And as a member of the Subcommittee for the Emergency Rental and Housing Assistance provided during COVID, I can say that this kind of naturally came up as the next step in terms of what that group could work on. That group was really effective in putting together a plan and a policy that this board adopted and the town meeting adopted in short order to respond to the COVID-19 emergency, and I think the group is prepared to do that same kind of work, to put a framework together and a proposal for what could be a housing trust. As Mark mentioned, there's numerous resources and examples of other communities that have done this. You know, Canton is a neighboring community that did it in the last five years. So I think the group is well poised to put this together, this framework, and then present it for adoption, if that's what the town and the board would choose to do. So I think it's a really good opportunity, and if you have a group of passionate, enthusiastic volunteers, I think you should try to harness that while they're active and willing. So I think you explained it well, Mark, and I hope that the board would support it. I know I'm in support of it, so. With that, I'll see if anyone has any additional questions. Mr. McCrisky, you unmuted. Did you have a question or comment?
No, I was just unmuting so I could be proactive on unmuting at once, instead of being stuck on it. No, I'm in support. There's nothing to hurt us at all with moving forward and seeing how it all plays out, so good luck, Mark.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Kavy?
Thank you. I'd also like to just let Mr. Zemanian know that I appreciate the work he's doing for the community. I think this is really important, and something that, if not for you, I don't know who would be paying attention to this and really pushing it forward, and it's so important for us. Thanks for doing the lifting, thanks for making it happen, and you have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavy. It's good to hear so far that I'm getting support, and I encourage your active participation in this whenever possible, Steve. Thank you.
The board have comments? Mr. Oregan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to congratulate the committee, and particularly Mr. Zemanian, for bringing this forward. There was a meeting that I was able to attend with the Community Preservation Committee, where this was introduced, kicked around. I know that this is something that came up in a Select Board meeting in the cathartic room, I think a year ago, October. So this is really great to see move along. I don't know whether it's be necessary to expand the scope of the committee formally, or whether the idea would be to just allow these energetic volunteers to go forward and make progress without having any formal votes get in the way. It's a, the magic of the group is that it cross-pollinates among a number of constituencies in the town to make it work. And one area that I know we've talked about in the past where this could be particularly important is in the downtown area, where particularly for making, quote-unquote, affordable units available for folks when they want to downsize, in a neighborhood that's walkable, where the affordable, for the inclusionary zoning in the downtown, which we have had, I think has dampened investment. This would allow essentially the trust to buy into affordability for units, and therefore promote a higher density of affordable units in the downtown, where it might just be two things, one, where it's needed, and two, to encourage development that otherwise is chilled by the inclusionary zoning requirements in the downtown. So all kinds of places. Thank you, Mark, for taking the lead on this.
Thank you, Bob. And, you know, how this all comes together remains to be seen. I do have some next steps after the board has made their comments, and if there's any public comment. So thank you, Bob.
Well, I'm retiring soon, and one of the things I've wanted to do is to get this trust going, but on the Select Board, there's precious little time to work on a bunch of projects we have, so if I can participate in this after April, please, I'd look forward to it.
We'll keep that in mind, and thank you for the offer.
Ms. Roberts, I see you raised your hand.
Oh, yes. I too agree and fully support this program. Thank you, Mr. Zemanian, and I agree with everything you said. I attended a meeting and also watched the video in reference to this program, and what you said is heartfelt. And I also agree that this does give corporations an avenue to continue to support the Town of Stoughton by potentially investing in this program. It's very good. Thank you so very much.
Yes, thank you, Deborah. Those are great comments, and you're absolutely right. This is a passion of mine. I have been on both sides of the spectrum, so I know and understand how regular people can get stuck. And I think we're looking at a pandemic right now that really displays that possibility for many people. There are some of us who are very fortunate and have been able to work right through this, but there are many who haven't, and they've had to make some really tough decisions. And with the support of the Select Board here tonight, you know, we have provided tremendous help for those residents who are struggling, and I thank you for that. However, this goes that next step. This is an attempt to ensure that the, that our housing market is stabilized for generations, not just in the moment, so thank you.
I think, you know, I know, Mr. Oregan, you mentioned we don't need any motions tonight, but I think if there's a motion to support the Subcommittee's request to research and present a framework for a housing trust for the board at a future meeting, I think that would be appropriate for tonight at least, give them some direction beyond their scope of just COVID-19 emergency response.
So, Madam Chair, let me make the motion to endorse the efforts by the Housing Assistance Committee to prepare and advance the creation of a housing trust for the town, and request that the town manager make resources and town staff to advance that as quickly as possible.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. We look forward to seeing what you can, well, I guess I'd be involved in that, too. So we'll get the ball rolling, and we appreciate you keeping this momentum going and your work on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Select Board members. If I could just take a real brief moment to give you an idea as to where we're going from here. The Subcommittee intends on researching other towns' housing trusts and how they were put together and function, the good and the bad, and determining the best course of action for Stoughton. We'll be working with state agencies to develop the framework. We will coordinate with the Select Board, Planning Board, Housing Authority, and Redevelopment Authority to ensure that this trust meets the town's needs fully. We will identify a starting project, or we hope to. Our initial project should be one that's attainable, such as rehabilitating an existing home that the town already owns, or something along that line. Something small and simply done so as to build a little momentum and to show the corporations in the town that we're serious about this. We will, at some point, create a bylaw for the Stoughton Housing Trust. We will hold public forums and public hearings, and hopefully bring this to town meeting in the future for a vote. We will require legal assistance from town council, and, Mr. Oregan, I thank you for the mention, or the previous speaker, I'm not sure who did it now, to tell you the truth, but we'll need to create a declaration of trust, but this is much further down the line. And I will be keeping the Select Board up to date with, hopefully, some regular updates as to our progress. Try and keep everybody in the same loop. So thank you tonight so much for your vote of support, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. Dr. Grimm, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just want to ask Mr. Zemanian, if you could, Mark, could you just set up a time with me, and we can sit down and talk right up front and think about, as you get ready, what you'll need for staff from us or assistance from staff, so we can be prepared, and we can schedule out that time so that we're ready to roll with you. I too think that this is tremendous, and the walkable village concept for seniors is ideal, and when you have a train that runs right through, people who want to go to Boston and may not even want to drive when they're 75 years old either, there's a host of things, even just about outside of the affordability, but about quality of life for our seniors. And I think that that's a very, very important thing. So absolutely, please just give me a shout, and we'll set up a time to look at what kind of a team we can put together.
That would be great, Robyn, thank you so much. I will do that. We're meeting this coming Monday, so I'll reach out to you before then and give you an idea. You know, if you have a, if you want, we don't, I don't think need it immediately, but if you choose to or would like a staff member involved, you know, even on a, just sort of a good listening ear to determine where we're at and where they can jump in, happy to accommodate anything you need, you know, and we appreciate your extension of the staff, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks again, Mr. Zemanian. Next item on our agenda is the Saferoots-to-School Project Update. I believe we have Mr. Tisdale, the Director of Development Services/Town Engineer, on the line to present on this item.
Thank you, Chairman, how, how's everybody doing tonight?
How are you?
Good, good. Here's a short and sweet presentation. Remember, two months ago, we did a presentation in front of you, update you where we were and what the next steps were, which is very similar to it, but we're further along the process for that project. I'll just turn on my screen, if that's okay.
Yep. And Craig, I'm just going to mute you, we're getting a little feedback.
All right, can you see that?
Yes.
All right. All right. And I apologize, there's been a couple of PowerPoints that I gave to the board, I guess I'm just stuck on the 2020 year, so things you have in your packet say 2020, so I've updated it here, obviously, so. All right, so we're here in front of you for the Saferoots-to-School Project that you've heard about over the last few years, giving you an update, just a little recap of what the project is and where it's located. It goes from essentially Pearl Street to the Tosca Drive intersection, just a little before that, it'll blend nicely in with that next project, the redesign of the Tosca Drive intersection. This just shows you what, just an aerial view, showing you what the improvements are along the corridor, you see some improvements. Yep.
Slide 12 is frozen.
It's frozen, huh?
Yeah, I'm not seeing the slides advance, so maybe unshare and reshare, that might solve it.
Yep. Okay, sorry about that, strange. That look a little better?
You can see the mouse moving. It's not quite in presenter mode, but I can see it moving, so if you want to change to slide two, maybe that will, okay, they're shifting now, so that's good.
Okay, just not going to go, I'm not going to do the presentation button through PowerPoint, I'll just do it like this.
Okay.
I think that might be causing an issue. All right, so that was, I just explained to you the project location from Pearl to Tosca Drive intersection, and I told you it blended very nicely with the design of that intersection as that's coming along in the next couple of years. Let's move over to the next slide. Okay. Just wanted to double check. This just shows you a very quick and dirty aerial view of the project corridor, shows you, there'll be a shared-use path along the be a shared use path along the south side of Central Street with some improvements inside the school. More specifically, this is the cross-section for that whole corridor. Two 11-foot lanes, which is pretty standard with two-foot shoulders. And there'll be a shared use path, which is 10 feet wide. Shared use path is just a fancy way of saying a large sidewalk that's 10 feet wide for bikes and pedestrians to travel on together without them being separated by the curb. This is a, this is a close-up of the improvements to the school property. As you can see, it'll be a very nice improvement to that parking area. Separates the parking from the main road. As you're aware now, cars park on a gravelly area that's around the side of the road, and it's a pretty dangerous, unsafe situation. The project schedule, it's obviously been going on for a while now. We are at the 100% design stage. The project is going to be advertised for construction by Mass DOT in May. We do have some steps that the town has to take before then, some critical steps for the project to be advertised in May. I copied this slide right out of the last presentation to your Board and just kind of highlighted the most important step coming up. But let me get to that first. Step one, there was a shed that was actually in the right-of-way that was causing some issues from a legal standpoint. The homeowner actually was willing to work with the town. Your Board signed a license agreement for us to demolish the shed. The shed is no longer there, so we accomplished that task. We are in the process of accomplishing a license agreement with the county for some minimal work on their property. I don't expect any issues from that. We have finalized the right-of-way plans. They are done. And our next step will be in front of your Board on March 30th. And I did send you that email, Christine, requesting to be on that meeting. The Select Board is going to acquire the permanent temporary easements for the project. Then after that, the project is going to be constructed in May. And the total cost of the project is $3.5 million that is paid for by the state. More specifically, for your meeting coming up on the 30th, just want to explain to you what that actually is a little more detailed. That's called the Order of Taking Meeting. We all do not like the word taking. We're not, this is just a formal name that DOT names the process. It is, we are not taking anybody's land. These are mostly all temporary easements that will, that just because the sidewalks and the edge of properties, they have to do a little work on the edge of the property, degrade the property, and then they'll lower them and cede it, and then the easement goes away. So, they're temporary easements. There are some permanent easements from the utility company that are in the air. So, they're actually not on the property, they're in the air. So, in case they ever need to work on the utility poles or the lines, they can do it legally. All new utility pole projects require this now. So, the process for DOT, for the Order of Taking process is, it follows the Federal Aid Acquisition Guide for property owners. There's a lot of detail in this packet, but I like to just hit upon some of the more major points. Step one was, we obviously designed, generated a design, had a public hearing, which was held by DOT in June of 2020. Then the design was finalized and preliminary right-of-way plans were prepared. That's when we came in front of you, essentially in December for that presentation. At that point, once you know what the right-of-way is, what the plans entail, the owners of the affected properties are notified of the acquisition process. Optional certificate of donations can be submitted to the town from them. And that happened in August of 2020. Final right-of-way plans were created and appraisals were generated to the affected properties. Just compensation letters and offers were sent out to all those properties, as roughly 26 properties. That was done in February of this year. We are now in what they call the 30-day waiting period for the owners to consider the offer and ask questions. We've had a couple owners call up and ask questions. There's been no issues. Quite frankly, we've, if you didn't do enough public outreach at this stage, this could be a really big issue at this 30-day waiting period of people hearing it for the first time. But Craig and I actually walked the property several times, knocked on doors, explained to people the project. We've had public outreach meetings with the school committee. They notified all the butters. That happened a couple of months ago. Three or four years ago, we had numerous meetings with the school committees and the Board of Select. And so, this has been a very well-known project, very well-vetted, I think. So, that's, I think that's why we've gotten minimal phone calls from people. So, on March 30th, the Select Board will vote to acquire those easements. And then the property owners are then notified again in writing and awarded damages. Those will be the property owners that did not give donations. Roughly out of the 26 properties, I think we got four or five donations from the residents. So, there'll be approximately 21 damages awarded. Just to remind the Board, there was an article at the annual town meeting last year for this exact purpose. And that was yet again another very large public outreach event, if you want to call it that, between the Finance Committee meetings and the Select Board meetings and town meeting. So, that article was exactly for the right-of-way acquisition costs associated with this project. And that's the conclusion of our presentation tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mark. Do members of the Board have questions for Mr. Tisdale? Mr. Kavy?
I think this showed up a little bit earlier in your slides, but I just wanted to ask about the location of these sidewalks. Is it going all the way from, it was going all the way down West Street? Where's it start? Where's it end?
It's on Central Street.
Sorry, Central Street, sorry. Central Street. Where does it start?
Yeah, no problem. It goes from right where they did the new improvements on Pearl Street, the new crosswalks, all the way down Central Street into the school property. This is on the south side, all the way down to right to the edge of the limit of work for the Tosca Drive intersection. So, right near where the park is roughly, a little bit east of that. So, this cross-section will blend right in with the design of the Tosca Drive intersection beautifully, so.
So, it does not extend to the Hanson Schools, just near the West School, right?
Goes past the West School, Wilkins School.
Wilkins, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other members have any questions for Mr. Tisdale? You answered all of mine in your presentation, Mark, so I appreciate that. And we'll be sure to include you on the agenda for the 30th, so we can vote on those easements as required.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. There's nothing further on this item. We are featuring Mr. Tisdale on the next item, which is the Park Street Sewer Project Update and a consideration of a vote to bond and bid the project.
Alright. Thank you very much once again. And thank you for putting me together on my two presentations.
Didn't want to put you at the beginning and the end, that would have been cruel, so.
Although, there's a lot of intriguing things on your agenda tonight, so I'm going to probably stay on and watch them, so.
Sure.
Alright. Alright, so we're at the Park Street Sewer Project again. We're at the final, the final stages of the project here. Alright. Purpose of this meeting, I'm just going to read it right from the slide. "To request the Select Board to authorize the bidding, bonding, undertaking, intent of assessing bediments for 25% of the total project cost incurred by the town for the property shown on the attached map in the presentation. Authorization by the Select Board for the project to be bid and bonded was presented at town meeting, very similar to what we did with the design article. We said we wouldn't go out and bond the design article until we went in front of your Select Board, we got approval, we did that. And now, we're at that stage again for this project." Just a little recap of the project. If you can't already see this map in your head, my notes have been in my head for a while. 73 properties we're talking about.
Do you want to share the, you're not sharing the presentation. I didn't know if you wanted to pull it up.
Off my game time. Alright.
If paper or virtual copies are ready.
Sorry about that. I was looking at my screen and thinking I'm presenting it. Alright. So, anyway, this was the slide I just read out loud, the purpose of the meeting. Can you see that?
Yes, thank you.
And this was the slide I was on, explaining the project area with the 73 properties, 28 commercial, 45 residential, linear footage of sewer, the pressurized force man, there's one pump station at 175 Campanelli. And now, the estimated construction cost is one thing that has changed on this slide versus what was presented at town meeting. These were further along with the design. The article was for 7.5 million. We are at 6.8 million, and I'll get into the reasons for that in a little bit. This slide kind of breaks down what I was just talking about. The box on the left is a construction cost breakdown that was taken exactly from the presentation at town meeting in 2020 for 7.327 million dollars. The article was for 7.5 million. The box on the right is an exact match to the left, other than the numbers. We've updated it, and now we are at 6.766 million dollars for the project cost, mostly because the plans have gone from permitting plans to what we call construction grade plans, plans that we'll go to bid with. Things get finalized and tweaked with plans like that. The contingency will then go down with those kind of plans, and that's the biggest change, is the contingency is now from 20% down to 10%. So, we are at 6.766 million dollars. So, the total cost reduction from the last town meeting is roughly $561,000. Grant, since last town meeting, essentially, I think the week after town meeting, we've been right on the grants, you know, two major grants that we were hunting for. The first one, we applied for, it took two or three months to get the grant together. It was the Mass Works Grant. It was worth the work because we got 2.5 million dollars out of that grant. We were, in our town meeting presentation, we're expecting a million to a million and a half in that range with the financial analysis we did, just for the Mass Works Grant. So, we got 2.5 on that one. The next one was the EDA Cares Act, which no grant was easy to get. Mass Works certainly was not easy. It took, like I said, two or three months. But the EDA Cares Act is a federal grant, very, very difficult. I can't tell you how many phone calls and emails we've had on this thing, and just documentation, it goes on and on. But Craig's on tonight, he can vouch for me. He's been helping me out tremendously with that grant. That grant, we did get an award letter, preliminary award letter for 350,000 a couple of weeks ago. And since then, we've been in conversation with EDA and giving them more documents and finalizing the contract on that. The total amount of grants is 2.85 million dollars. Also, just that we thought it would be kind of important to just bring back, you know, some of the projects. There was a lot of questions, you know, we don't have projects that are committed, people are planning the projects, and there was a lot of that. And I just want to mention some good news, because there's one major project being permitted right now in front of the Planning Board and Conservation Commission for 200 Schumanav. If you're probably familiar with that, that was the project that we did the TIF for. It's an 80,000-square-foot building expansion for advanced manufacturing, 15 million dollar construction costs. It's currently being permitted in the town, as I mentioned. 200 jobs total, and 50 new jobs. Permitting fees will be around 150,000 dollars for that. Estimated additional taxes to the town over 20 years. We took the 10-year TIF, which was 574. Then we took the new growth that was also presented in the TIF for the years 10 through 20 as an estimate. So, the total tax revenue over 20 years would be over 2 million dollars. We're just using 20 years because that was what the financial analysis was based on. Other projects in the planning stages, one's very deep in the planning stage right now, is the 146 Campanelli Parkway Project. The developer is actually looking to a couple of different things at the property. He's hired engineer. He's either looking to put a building expansion on, 45,000 square feet, which he can do, or potentially subdivide in the parcel and put a new separate building on the property. And that use would be unknown at this point, but it would probably be a multiple-story building. Construction costs, if you were just going to add on to, if this existing building is 5 million, the permitting will happen in the next year or so. Construction will happen within the next three years. There's 105 jobs total, 75 new jobs. 966 Park Street, 20,000-square-foot building expansion, where medical offices, they're able to do that because they're able to put a building on top of where the septic system currently is. 2.1 million dollars in construction costs. The permitting and construction for that will happen 18, 30 months after the sewer pipes end. 155 total jobs, 80 new jobs. Lastly, 175 Campanelli Parkway, the owner, that's actually the parcel that the easement's on. The owner's been great to work with. He got us the easement, very easy to work with. He's already got plans drawn up, showing a 60,000-square-foot building expansion on that property, 12 million in construction costs. And the permitting and construction will be roughly around three years from now. 30 new jobs will result from that. There are other projects. I'm not sure if they're in the planning stages, but they're definitely going to be coming forward. We've got five or six, actually, the EDA grant, that grant I was talking to you about, they require signed letters from these people, not just, you know, letters, but signed forms from these people. So, these are all real projects that are happening in the next, you know, handful of years at least. I thought it would be important to bring back the bediment slide that we had at town meeting last year. The top box is the bediment slide, part of the bediment slide from the town meeting last year with the 7.5 million dollar construction cost. And we assumed for the bediments at that point was 2 million dollars in grants. So, the box in the bottom is the bediment calculations, using all the same logic for 6.8 million dollar construction costs. So, obviously, the construction cost itself reduces bediments. And then we awarded 2.5 million dollar grants, which is 850,000 more than we analyzed at town meeting. So, the easiest way to reduce this chart is looking at the column that's light gray further to the right, which says bediments paid upfront, no interest. If somebody pays it upfront, there's no interest. So, if you have no grants, so, if you look at the top box, no grants, that we presented at town meeting, it says 8,081. That was the meeting that the Select Board voted on for the bediment. It was around that 8,000 dollar number, because we couldn't guarantee the grants at that point. Now, if you move to the lower box, which would be under the current conditions, we've got 2.85 million dollars in grants, and we got the reduced construction cost. So, now the bediment is down to 4,256. So, we reduced it by, you know, almost half with the construction cost and the grants. And you'll also see, you know, we do have an article at town meeting this year to make it as affordable as we can for the residents along Park Street and Campanelli, to put the interest rate at 2% above the town's borrowing rate. Since our borrowing rate right now is a percentage and a half, we can put the 2% above that, which is by state statute. It's already approved in legislation to do that. So, you'd have a 3.5% net interest rate on the loan. And we presented this to your Board previously when we were going through with the articles. But what I'm trying to say is, we've tried to make every effort to make this as cheap as possible for everybody, the entire town, the residents, businesses, everybody in their strip. Next steps, the Select Board votes to bond and bid the project, obviously this month, hopefully tonight. The project bidding occurs in April, May. We're hoping earlier in April. Construction begins July to August of 2021, and substantial completions completed in December of 2022. The system will probably be functional around July of 2022. That is the presentation tonight for the Select Board. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If I could just jump in quickly, I just want to thank Mark and Craig for tremendous work, particularly on these grants. The Mass Works Grant, I think the amount of it reflects probably the work. We see those millions and we just intuitively know how much work went in. But I think what might be a little bit deceptive is that EPA grant. That grant just encompassed hours and hours and hours of both of those gentlemen's efforts. And we can't thank them enough to still maintain their other workload and be committed to getting this grant. This is very challenging, very difficult, included meetings with multiple agencies, a change in national administration, which puts projects into a whole different sphere, and that changes requirements. And I can't express enough that, we can't look at that number and think that somehow that was just some sort of passing grant because it pales comparatively to the multimillion-dollar one. But I just want to pass along a tremendous thank you to Mark and his team, and Craig's on, for just an overwhelming amount of work and commitment. for just an overwhelming amount of work and commitment to this. Thank you.
I thank you, thank you very much, and I couldn't have done it without the help of the team members, so.
Thank you, Mark. My only kind of question or thought, I guess, is maybe just something for consideration as the American Rescue Plan, I think it's called, has been announced by the, the federal government, which will create sort of a stimulus package for states and municipalities. I understand that Stoughton will receive a chunk of funding and there is the ability to use that funding toward some infrastructure project specifically called out was water and sewer. So I don't know if that will immediately come into play or if that can just be looked at for consideration for the reducing costs or offsetting other costs. Because if we do, you know, bid this project, bond the project, we'll be carrying that debt. And so we have, obviously we have done some of our water treatment facilities and so on and so forth. So I think as we start to weather the, the COVID storm a little bit further, it might be worth kind of looking into that chunk of federal dollars to see if it can come into play here as well, so. And on that EDA grant, it, it's definitely a huge lift. That cannot be understated. Typically, that grant is only available to specific communities that meet income eligibility requirements at the federal level, but they expanded it due to COVID, which made it just that more competitive. And I think, you know, Mass is part of a, a region, the Northeast region, which includes many other states. So to have Stoughton be awarded the grant is a huge accomplishment. So kudos to, to the staff, Mark, your team, Dr. Grim, everyone. So definitely can't be understated, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Other members of the board have questions for Mr. Tezdale on this. And so Mark Tenet, you're looking for a motion to vote to bond the project or put it up to bid?
I would, I would read it right from that, that slide there I gave you. Yep, essentially that bidding, bonding, undertaking, intent of assessing betterments for the project.
Mr. Regan?
We are exactly, I think we're actually further ahead than we wanted to be. And, and in addition to complimenting the entire team led by Mark on this project, it's, it is no small accomplishment for the expansions in the commercial properties, which was a main goal to build the tax base for this project in addition to the environmental issues that are inherent in getting sewer down there. So the, the EDA grant was a big lift. The Mass Works Grant was a big lift. We cannot overlook the big lift going on in expansion of those properties, which is the big lift that this sewer project was motivated to get for the town. So I move, and exactly where, or further than we want it to be. So I'll move that the board authorized the bidding, bonding, undertaking, and intent to assess betterments of 25% of the total project cost incurred by the town for the property shown on the map demonstrated by Mr. Tezdale. And for the project to be bid and bonded as presented at town meeting representative at the 2020 annual town meeting.
Okay, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any additional discussion on the seeing none, I'll call for vote, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kavy?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much, we'll get this thing on the street by next month or so.
Thanks so much and best of luck with the bidding process. Let's hope, let's hope the estimates are accurate.
Thank you.
Okay, next item margin, oh Bob, I see, is your hand just a leftover hand raise?
It's just stuck, I'll, I'll stick it, sorry about that.
All right, next on our agenda, we have our continued public hearing from March 2, which was the Public Safety Facilities Planning and Building Committee presentation on the design of the proposed new fire station. And I understand the Chair, Joel Wolk, is here to provide the board some updates on information that we had requested at the previous meeting. And I think Joel is accompanied by some members of the project team as well. So if board members have any subsequent questions, we can ask them.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do we need to move to open, reopen the public hearing?
That would probably help. Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing, to continue the public hearing. On the motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Kavy?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, Joel, now you can go. Sorry.
We're good to go, thank you. Thank you, Chairperson Howe. What we'd like to do here is make a short presentation. The first part, there are a number of questions that were asked at the last public hearing. We have answers to some of those questions. So in the first part of our presentation, we're going to answer some of those questions. And on the second part, most of those questions will be answered by our, either our owner's project manager, Palmeroy Associates, or architect Doran Whittier. The second part, there was a question about the debt models that we had provided in terms of the impact of inflation. I see Rick Hill, our vice chairman, is here. Hopefully he'll be able to weigh in on that. And the last part was a request from a member of the Select Board to do additional response analysis based on a couple of other criteria. I believe Mr. Kavy made the response. And we have the answer to that and the architect Doran Whittier will provide that answer. So with your permission, Christine, we'd like to move in that direction.
Yep, that sounds great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So Taylor, why don't you start? You better introduce yourself. Hello, Taylor?
It's on mute.
I see you, Taylor, but go ahead, Taylor.
Taylor McDonald, Palmeroy Associates. I'm going to ask if Glenn can pull up the response that was sent around to the board.
Sure, the, the Select Board questions.
Yes.
I've, I've got a number of things open, so everyone just fire away when they need something. I can switch it pretty easily here.
Did you want to go through those, Don?
Actually, we're going to let Glenn lead that discussion tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. I mean, do we want to just sort of march through the list of questions that we got or?
Yeah, I would just go through right, each one and, and rattle them off.
Okay. I'll try and be succinct. First question was about the margin of error in the response time model. And talking with our response time analyst, the, the key to any margin of error would be in the actual data provided. To, I guess, put it topically or simply, the methodology, detailed methodology was attached to the response memo here if folks wanted to go into more detail or see that in more detail. I guess I should ask, is there more question about that? Or should I just kind of keep going through these and then we can circle back with questions?
Why don't you keep going through it, we'll circle back.
I think that's a good idea. Regarding meeting with any abutters at the Armory site, if the Armory site was the site, or frankly with any site, as is part of the process typically with any projects, we would certainly be part of the effort to reach out to the, the abutters and discuss impacts and schedule and timing and mitigation measures for any disruption in the neighborhood. Typically, the OPM spearheads that, but we're always there to support with any material to back that effort. Question three about finding more land available to purchase. Sure, it, it sounds like there are a couple of options and we can touch on that with some of the added response time analysis data that we had done. But I think there, there are some basic metrics to any site, given the size, the topography, the, obviously the response time, access to utilities and, and that sort of thing. We've got the programming data, we've got the building blocks to design a building for any site. Ideally, a site could accommodate the schematic design we have that was for the Armory site, but we were also asked to make sure that that would fit, at least when we started on a site like at the Fanon Drive site or another similar sized site that had the rooms to accept that layout.
The update, the update after this too, as an update from our last committee meeting, we'll touch on this more, more available land.
We were asked about what, either was a deeper examination done or could one be done about how many properties would have to be purchased to make a viable project at the existing 30 Freeman Street Fire Station? As well as the adjacent property at 1232 Washington. I think both our office and Palmeroy feel that, that, that process is, is delicate. And I think Robin for sure understands that, as most of us do about approaching private property owners. But if something is on the market, of course, the, the town and the team could consider seeing what that would, what that would mean. But in terms of making the Freeman Street site, expanding it large enough to fit the current design or something that fit the current program that we've got, we'd need a minimum of six lots just to fit the building and, and the immediate site space around it. That would be without any onsite parking whatsoever. And it looks like, depending on how it fit on the block, we would need up to 11 lots or just about the entire block short of the sort of larger apartment, three or four story apartment house on the northeast corner. But that, that's a big ask, that's, that's taking a lot of buildings, that's an awful lot of demolition and site clearing and disruption. I, I think, I, I tend to think that was sort of a, an exercise. That, that would be, that'd be an interesting approach. Not to mention that I think the neighborhood is difficult as it is for some of the apparatus to get in and out at the intersections, given the, the sharp turns or the busy intersections. But I, I think as I've, I've tried to encourage folks that we can solve any problem. You know, you tell us what the parameters are, we'll, we'll make it work. The property at the corner of Ash Street be suitable. In our brief look at that site with the building committee, it's, it looks pretty good. I think one of the things that was curious is that the sewer project will, in the near future, extend down to allow that site to connect to it. So that would be favorable. The geometry is a little different than what we've been dealing with, with some of the layouts, but I think we could take certainly the existing fire station program and either as is or with minor modifications, make it work well on that site. Again, I think there is a, a potential for some, some significant discussions we'd want to have with the abutters. That would, that would be a, a big change kind of nestled in that, that part of town. But it looks pretty good in, in terms of response time. Obviously, it's quite close to that Fano Street site, so it all makes sense. I'm going to have to leave number six to others that are perhaps smarter or more knowledgeable about the financing in terms of the impact of inflation on the bond model.
Glenn, why don't you hold off for a second? Rick, do you want to pop in here for a minute?
Sure, so the short and simple answer is no. So inflation hasn't been built into the, to the calculations for the, for the debt model, nor has inflation been factored into the, the number that we're using for a budget number, a ceiling number for that line, and also, you know, the, you know, increasing property values from a new school in that neighborhood and et cetera, and expanding the tax base hasn't been calculated in. But we have a new version of the model, I'm pretty close to finishing up on a PowerPoint presentation that I think simplifies the explanation of it. So I'll then be coordinating some presentations for the Select Board and FinCom to get the information out there and then field any questions that folks might have.
Thank you, sir. Glenn, you want to pick up again?
Sure. Number seven was about a question about the, how to proceed with what we were tasked to do in terms of the, the previous Select Board decision to put forward the, the approval of the plans and elevations, if you will, with the site question being left as an unknown. You know, both of our offices, Palmeroy and Doran Whittier's offices, feel that, that you'd want to tread lightly. I think you, at the very least, would need to have a, a pretty significant allowance for whatever the site unknowns are in terms of purchase and preparation and utilities. But that could certainly be built into a conceptual budget that way. It is, it is, there's obviously a chance that the site that ended up being used would require significant or somewhat modified plans, so there's that to consider. It's, it's a bit of a, a difficult question to theorize about. But I'm not sure if, if Taylor, you or Rick wanted to chime in, or Don, we, we talked a good bit about this, this idea of a project without a site.
Yeah, I think not only in, in terms of no site, but we, this question came up in terms of the budget too, where the, we need to have an approved budget in our eyes to go to, you know, to FinCom with as well too. So we didn't feel it'd make much sense to, to bring them, just the program and schematic design at this point without a budget for them to, you know, look, look at. And, you know, I mean, that is the FinCom, so that's how we felt about that.
Right. Number eight was about the cost or operational impacts of including the administrative spaces that are currently in the station two in the new facility versus remaining in place. I think the chief has given a good bit of information about operationally those impacts, the pros and cons of, of that impact. But I think it's, it's, we've done a preliminary cost exercise about removing the square footage from the, the new building and looking at renovations to the existing building. It's a bit of a push-pull. We haven't been necessarily directed to proceed 100% one way or the other, but as it is now, the project includes that administrative space to allow that staff to move to the new building and free up space operationally for, I believe, ambulance crews at, at the existing headquarters building or station two, which I think that was another question recently about, I think one of our drawings listed it one way and then another said the other, but that was just a typo. I don't know if the chief is on and wanted to speak to that more or if that covers it enough. His, I think his description fits the bill pretty well.
I don't believe the chief is on, so we'll have to hold on that for later.
Okay, I think that was the end of the list that I've got. And here is the quick diagram of the Freeman Street site with the, as the plan exists now, the, the footprint of the building placed in the neighborhood with some, maybe about two thirds of the parking that we've, we've determined that would be needed ideally. And the yellow box represents the existing site itself, which within that box is the existing fire station. So you can see the scale is significantly different. But I think that covers those, those questions we got, at least from the last meeting. I don't know if there's more to, more to cover, more detail you guys would like?
I'll just ask members of the board, do you have any follow-up questions to these that were just presented or do you need clarification on anything that was just presented by the project team? If not, I'll let Joel continue.
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Howe. Our committee met last, Wednesday of last week and we had a very long discussion about where we were in the project and how we felt about what was selected. And after, and during that meeting, our committee voted to recommend that Article 26, recommend to the Select Board that Article 26 be removed from the annual town meeting warrant and instead be included in a special town meeting later this year. Our reasons are that we, as a committee, were not satisfied that the location of a new fire station at the Stoke Armory site was the best solution for the town. It was a solution. And we believe that we would prefer to take the additional time to explore other options and obtain additional input from the public before we make a better recommendation. It may end up that we end up with the same recommendation we have previously made, but there's a couple of things that have come on board. I know that in working with the town manager, we're going out and asking for additional proposals on parcels of private land that would be suitable for proposals on parcels of private land that would be suitable for us. This will be different than what we did, I think, two or three years ago because this is solely for a fire station, which means less land is required, and we believe that we are familiar with some possible owners of properties in the town who, at this point in time, might be more interested. So Chairwoman Howe, I'm not sure how you would like to proceed here, if you'd like to vote on withdrawing or still continue with the public hearing. I'll have to leave that up to you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Appreciate the update, and Mr. Regan and I are members of that committee, so we were included in that discussion, and I believe that vote was unanimous.
Yes, and the town manager is a member of the committee, also voted that way too.
Correct. And so just speaking for myself, I know that, I, I think that the project is, it's making a lot of really great progress, however, there's clearly some indecision and sort of a lack of surety about the, the site, the Armory site as being the preferred or best site. So I think if we want to do the project right and ensure that the best option is presented to town meeting, that we've really exhausted all possibilities in terms of available sites. A few have kind of popped up recently, and I think doing the RFP to get that final search for just the fire station, as you noted, Mr. Wolf, which will be different from previous RFP, will give us sort of the assurance and maybe even, you know, overturn a different stone that we didn't previously look under. Additionally, I think that the financing is really going to be critical to this. So until we have that full picture of whether this is going to be entirely funded out of the debt service or a combination of an exclusion and funding out of the debt service or some other option, I think that it's premature to bring this, to kind of cram this into this town meeting without knowing that and having gotten ahead of it. There's an immense amount of public outreach that needs to be done, so to ensure that that is successful. Because if there isn't an exclusion needed, that would require also a townline vote. So I think as this continues to move forward, we can keep chipping away those, that public outreach and ensure that the project that's presented is going to be the best option and the most viable for success. So, Mr. Regan, I see you raised your hand, I know you're in the meeting as well, if you want to chime in.
I just wanted, thank you, I just wanted to emphasize that everything you said, Madam Chair, is spot on, that in the perspective would be, past this prologue, this is a hundred year building, even though times change, the practices of the town may not, so we need to get this right. Many of us have heard from town meeting representatives, in addition to our own desire to get, to have received more public input, more, and frankly, more public participation that the pandemic has, I think, worked a chill. We've heard from town meeting members who are really desiring a better perspective than the current circumstances allows them to get on this project. And so in addition to everything that, that Joel and you said, there's the, there's the underlying desire to make sure when town meeting votes, town meeting is comfortable that the community is behind and understands the project and understands the solutions that have been made to offer, which time does not permit us to do for a May.
Thank you. Taylor, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that the, the RFP, it won't be limiting itself to a fire station-sized building per se, they'll be, rather than saying a fire station, a land for a fire station, it'll be a minimum land requirement to meet the RFP. So that way, if somebody does have land that is, you know, more than can fit just a fire station, we might be looking at a larger piece of land, but it's not going to exclude out larger pieces of land that could fit a public safety facility. So I just wanted to say that, that it'll be written in a way to allow anything up to a, you know, a minimum level of acreage.
Great. Thanks for that clarification.
And I think, I think though, and to sort of clarify on Taylor's a little bit, initially, what the building design is right now is a fire station.
Correct.
So when he referenced, this is public safety too, it's down the road, if it becomes a separate building, a police station separately, unless campus set up, just if we find a property that allows room for potential municipal growth, we would be crazy not to take advantage of something like that too. So Fran is going to be working on the bid to talk about, to keep in mind that there may be a need for potential growth. I mean, nobody's forgotten the fact that we do need to think about what we do with the police station, but in the short term, it's a fire station building, we have a general footprint that we're still working with, and so I think because we have a footprint now, it's a lot easier to look at a piece of property than look at a piece of property and have no doubt on. So the fact that we have this vision, we know it's a fire station, we know what the fire station looks like, and if we're fortunate enough to find something that can accommodate future growth, then, you know, we'd be crazy as a town not to look at that if it's affordable and works for our needs at this point.
Thank you. Mr. McCrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick observation is that as this process has moved along, and well after when the vote was taken in November to switch the focus to a fire station, and I made the motion, and I remember saying specifically, if we couldn't be ready, then come back and tell us what you've done. But I just want to point out that we still talk about Fano Drive, was never at agreement on Fano Drive, but we still talk about it, heard it again tonight. And we, we went out and designed a building, came up with a cost that we never had a piece of property for. And now to hear that we will, we will write it so that, you know, in a manner that, you know, it will fit a public safety building, we decided we weren't going to talk about a public safety building yet we're still talking about it. So just like to remind everyone that the board will decide what we advertise for, how we advertise for it, and then we pay the professionals, and we have a committee that will, will take charge of that direction as policymakers. But I just want to point that out, it just concerns me. It, I don't know why it's there. I did ask through an email for the link so I could get onto that meeting and just listen, but I never got that link, and therefore I wasn't able to be there. It just concerns me, folks. You know, I just want you to know, I may be, most likely, I'm in the minority, but this is what I'm seeing, you know, and, you know, this is going to be something more, it has to be funded in other ways than just in the budget, because if we do that, we won't be able to borrow for too much after that. That's going to put us up right against, against the wall, and if anything else happens, you know, we need to be able to have the authority, you know, to be able to bond, you know, so I'm concerned, as any individual member, I'm concerned. And that's what I'll take as we move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McCrisky. And just to clarify a couple of points, the building was designed for a site, the Armory site. The issue with that that has raised concerns recently for the building committee, and I think for this board, is the response time shift and the potential need for a third station in a few years. So I think what the committee is trying to do now is prevent that additional future need. Fano Drive is only being referenced for the response time. That's why that site rose to the top, and we all recognize that that is not a viable option anymore, and that's not being pursued. So I think the committee's gone back now to revisit what Joel said we did about two or three years ago, and look for that fire station site. I think if someone has 12 or 15 acres, say, that they can offer, they don't want to rule that out, but the minimum is what would be needed for a fire station, so that's what the RFP will call for. We did have a lengthy discussion about that on the building committee meeting about the parameters of the RFP, and it was clear to those members that the fire station is the objective of the board, and that was the direction of the board. So I think that'll be made clear in the RFP in terms of probably right the scope for that for the responses. So I think what your, your concern is well-heeded and understood by those members.
Well, with that, and just on the response, because you will remember, the first time I heard about the Armory site was just within the last month, and there was a building designed, but I did see plans for a building design on Fano Drive when it was being discussed. So, I mean, it's, you know, I'm just saying that we, we've talked about this, and I sure have been thrown under the bus on a couple of issues when things didn't go right, but I mean, we're talking about this, we've spent a lot of money, we're looking at three years, and we're no better off right now than we were when we started.
Ms. Roberts.
Yes, I had, I'm just asking for a little clarification, based on the last public hearing when we had Chief Larissy talk about the Armory. And he did not really indicate that that was a poor choice. What he actually said, as I recall, I didn't, I didn't record it, but as I recall, he said that the response time for the first two minutes was slower than the other options. So when you went back to your committee, the building committee, and you said they voted unanimously to, to look at other options, can you ask me, answer, why was that when Chief Larissy said something different? And maybe I'm misremembering, but so that's the first question. The second question is regarding response time also. And the response time, if we move the fire station number one to closer to the South School area, well then what happens to the response that the people in the Armory part of Stoughton are going to receive? Does time change? Does the speed and response change when it's closer to South going toward the Armory versus if the building is located at the Armory and the traffic flow of emergency goes toward the South School? So it, the timing must change based on traffic, but I never got a clear answer. So those are my two questions, please.
I'll let the project team respond to the response time question. I think there's a, sort of like an optimal location that's identified by the software. I don't know if Glenn or Don has an answer to that.
Thank you. So in terms of the response times, if you recall, the four-minute, less than four minutes and less than eight-minute response times, those are the standards. And within a couple of percentage points, all the sites perform admirably at four and eight minutes. As Chairman Howe, Chairperson Howe pointed out, the less than two minutes was a big difference maker with the Armory versus something towards the South School location, where that had a much better response time for less than two minutes. So what happens if you leave the Armory site and move someplace further south towards that South School site? What you're doing is you're seeing the four and eight-minute response times staying similar to the Armory, but the less than two-minute response time increases by, I believe it's about 13%. So that's, that's the biggest difference maker between the Armory and something more southerly located. Right, and I could add that they're very close. The new fire station at the Armory scores slightly better for the four-minute and under response time than the South School part of town concept, whereas under eight minutes that, I, I'm sorry to keep thinking of it as Fano Street or Fano Drive, but that scores a little bit better, obviously for the under two minutes, but more importantly, the four and eight-minute numbers, it scores a little better for the under eight-minute time. But both are very comparable overall.
To add to that, there was a number of sites that we looked at, some of them private sites that had better response times for the under two-minute, I think some even than the, you know, the area down Park Street. So I think that has kind of informed the committee, you know, especially as, like I said, there's a couple potential properties that have cropped up recently, so to do the RFP process would just really either eliminate that as an option and confirm that the Armory is the site to go with, or, or give another option that's maybe going to improve that response time, so, which I think the committee would feel better about, you know, because, and I don't know if Joel wants to fill in on the Chief Larissy thing, but it's my understanding that the Armory site would maintain existing conditions, but we're quickly outgrowing those kind of existing conditions, and we'd need in the near future a substation of some kind, a third station.
Well, that's my understanding, and I don't want to put words at the Chief Larissy's mouth, but based on the conversations that we've had with him at our committee meetings, my understanding is, is that the location of a fire station at the Stoughton Armory site is not, in his opinion, the best location for a fire station. It's not that it's a bad location, it's just not the best location. And the concept is, is that if we go to the Armory site, we'll have very good coverage. The only coverage that's a little debatable is the response time of under two minutes. If the town decides that they want to increase upon that, they may have to take a look at a second, a third fire station or another substation to be located closer to South Stoughton. At this point in time, we're not really heading in that direction, but I will tell you that since we now have some additional time to take a look at the options, that we might take a short look at this just to see what the impact would be in terms of not only a response time, but also a cost for construction. And the chief has come up with, and I don't have it in front of me, a fairly extensive analysis of what might require additional operating costs for his department if we went to a three-station fire department versus a two-station. I don't know if that answers your question, Deborah, or not.
Yes, it does, Mr. Joel, yes, it does. Thank you so very much. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't helping one part of town, like the south part of Stoughton, we're not side siding the Armory in that development area of part of Stoughton, so.
No, we, we're, we're very well aware of what that is, and one of the reasons why we had the additional response time analysis done was so that we could address those issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. KB.
Thank you. I, there's only a couple of comments I want to make. I appreciate all of the hard work that everyone's been doing on this, and I know there's a lot of complicated problems that have to be resolved as you're working through this, and in general, I just want to express my, my, my thanks for that, and your willingness to do this on a volunteer basis, and eat up, chew up your free time trying to help the town out. And so I kind of preface my, some of my comments with, at the end of the day, the work you guys are doing is truly amazing, and I'm thankful for it. The, the concerns I'm having is, there's a couple. If we take it, the idea that the property, any of the properties we have might not be the best location for a fire station, even though it's a very good one, if we take that to the extreme, right, we might say that if you really want to make response times almost nothing, we will put a fire station at the end of every street, right? And then our response times will be absolutely amazing, and there's no way that we'll ever be able to afford that, and we'll never be able to make that happen. That would be the best. Okay, so that's, that's obviously absurd. So we scale it back until we get to a place where we can find some sort of equilibrium between what we can afford, what could be done in a rational amount of time, and also one that fulfills a lot of our, our needs with regard to response time. And what I'm, you know, I understand you don't feel that the, the Armory reaches that equilibrium, but I'm not understanding exactly why, because it's, it's a site that is available to us for very little money, we already own it, just have to demolish the building, so it's, it's relatively inexpensive. The response times on a national standard are identical with every site that everyone else has said they like, and, and, you know, it fulfills the needs of the town. So the idea that the Armory, I'm not, I don't really care where this thing goes, I really want it to go into whatever, wherever it has to go, whoever likes it the best, but every indication I'm getting makes it sound like this was a perfectly fine site that will fulfill the needs of the town. But, but we are continuing to push the timeline out because there's a hope that there will be some other site that fulfills it better. And I just don't understand why the, the, sort of the priority is put on that. Why, why are we pushing the timeline out in the hopes of some other site? Is there, does somebody know of another site? Or are we just going to go hunting for another site? Does anybody know?
Well, we have, we've currently been informed about two private sites that I really can't bring up at a public meeting. One of them might be much more One of them might be, uh, uh, much more, uh, adequate. And if, uh, it can be done, uh, we might be able to move forward with it. I will tell you this, though. Uh, speaking as the chairman of the committee, I believe that, uh, if the select board says, no, we don't want you to wait and decides to keep it on the annual town meeting as an article, uh, we will proceed with that site and provide a very good fire station at the, uh, amount that was requested, uh, that we recommended, 28.2 million. On the other hand, uh, our committee feels that even though this is a good site and that we own it and it works well, and I will make my own personal guarantee that the slab in the Armory is not six feet thick. Speaking as a trained structural engineer, it'd be impossible. Uh, I believe that, uh, we can make it work, but if we do find another site with more public input, uh, that would, uh, make it better, uh, I think we ought to at least take the opportunity to take a look at it.
That's fair. I, I think that's fair. You guys are looking for, for a little bit more time, but, but, uh, uh, you know, what's a couple of months when we've already been waiting almost 100 years, right? So, uh, I, I, I understand, um, that, that there's, there is not necessarily, uh, something we have to do by this, this, uh, uh, this annual town meeting. On the other hand, uh, we, we've been kicking this thing around for a very long time, and I'd like to see some closure. Uh, so if we can, uh, if, if we go for some other site, what, what makes a, what do you, do you believe represents a, a reasonable amount of time to pursue this? And after which we say, well, what we have is what we have and we'll go with it.
Oh, no, we'll be able to come to that with a fairly decent conclusion. I think the problem that our building committee had, Mr. Kaby, was that, uh, when we started out doing what we were doing, we were in pretty decent shape. We had a good plan, we were ready to go forward with it. And then when COVID-19 hit, we literally just shut down for three months. So literally where we are right now as a committee is where we really should have been three months ago. And then we might not be even having this conversation. We feel that this is something that we want to have, we want it to be done right. And if it means waiting an extra five months for a special town meeting, then I think we should do that.
Well, thank you very much for, for your input on that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kaby. And I'll just add that another major component is the financing. And even if we had the right site, I am not sure that the financing model and plan to be presented to FinCom right now during their hearings, May Rec, May Ops, and get it, all the flyers out and everything you need for town meeting to encourage a vote in favor would be able to happen. Again, as, um, Joel stated, we're three months behind in a lot of ways, so. To me, that was also a major, major reason to, to vote to push this out, so. Mr. O'Regan, you have your hand raised?
Thank you very quickly. One other aspect I think that was on many people's minds, I know it was on mine, is to consider response time and population density. That is, the North Stoughton area where the Armory is, uh, that as a site, uh, the, the reach within, within the four minutes, just for a number of people who would need help or property that needs help is thinner than the other areas of the town. And so it's not just, as I was looking at it, just response time, but who and how many folks in town can be reached within that response time. And that's a perspective that in talking with the chief, to understand his perspective better, I came to conclude that it's worth thinking about this some more. And also, if the town makes a decision through town meeting, that town meeting make a fully informed, you know, decision, better informed that we're now able to provide on, on these costs and benefits to, to, to make that call. The, uh, the location that, the area where the chief prefers will allow him to reach more people who need help way quicker, uh, than the Armory site. And that made a difference to me to, to try to get it right in addition to, things I heard from town meeting members, that they would not be comfortable, uh, at this time, given the status of the project. Not, no criticism, just they, what I heard was people felt not quite able to do it now and they wanted, uh, they wanted more time to make sure we did it right.
Thank you. And I will call on Mr. Hill and then move over to the members of the public. You know, we've gone through all the board members. Rick, I know you've had your hand up, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, and I appreciate it. And just to clear up, um, one misconception which I've, I've heard a couple of times is that, funding from the general budget is one option. So, um, the reason that, you know, went down this path was because if we do debt exclusion for this building and we've got a South School or an elementary school right behind it, police station was part of the original charter of this group and there's another debt exclusion, and right behind that, the, the, within 10 years, the schools will be back for middle school, which is 90 million. So if you look at all those debt exclusions, in addition to the high school that we just debt excluded, it is a large hit to the taxpayers. So, um, when we did the debt model, uh, we calculated in the annual spending from town meeting, to be layered in on top of the cost of a new, uh, fire station, um, you know, going out for 30 years. So the model takes into consideration town meeting spending up through 2035. So it's not like you're gonna saddle up the budget with all the payments for the fire station, have no money left for other projects that the town has needed. But again, it's the reason it's a model is so that you can take into consideration as many variables as possible, um, except for inflation, Mr. Kaby. But, uh, we've, uh, we could build that in if we have to. Uh, so I, again, just a point of clarification, um, Madam Chair, and we'll, uh, we'll make sure that that's crystal clear in the PowerPoints that are forthcoming, which the select board would see for anybody else, uh, certainly the finance committee, because it's gonna be, uh, you know, certainly, uh, your discretion about how this will be financed.
Thank you. Taylor, very quickly, as anyone?
Very quickly, I just wanted to touch kind of on, on the timeline, um, that was brought up. And Joel made a good point of, of, uh, you know, COVID pushing us off, uh, three or four months. But, um, you know, the, I think the committee, um, should be, um, you know, what they, what they've been able to do along with the project team over the past, um, you know, five months to get us where we were is the project timeline that we've, you know, been sticking to. We've only just, you know, decided to, you know, talk about a slowdown in our last meeting because of what came up at the last Board of Sclavons meeting and, and potential, you know, new land, um, you know, coming up. Um, but the, you know, committee should be commended for, you know, what they've been able to do and quickly move on this after that South, um, School Area, um, location was kind of taken off the table. We had to pivot and, um, the pivot was towards the Armory. And, you know, now we're, we're pivoting it a little bit more, but that's only because, um, there might be some, some options that are, that are better on the table, so.
Thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up for any public comment. If members would like to speak, members of the public would like to speak, please unmute yourself or press the raise hand function, and I will call on you. I'm not seeing any, uh, indication. Oh, Mr. Anzavino?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just my perspective as a member of the finance committee, um, and with the present, uh, position that we're in on, on this particular, uh, project, I would think it would be most prudent, especially where you're about to, uh, consider opening a, a warrant for a special town meeting this evening. Uh, I think it would be most prudent to push this off from the annual until a special. It would give the committee, uh, and the, and the board a little more time to make sure they get everything together and, and be able to present a complete package, including, you know, financing, especially now if you think you might have other sites available. Just my opinion, I, I think the finance committee would be, uh, better served to if, if it sees a complete financial package and so forth, if, if they're looking, uh, to have support from the finance committee. I can only speak for myself, but just, you know, from, from what I've heard from them over time, and I'm sure Joel could tell you that. So, thank you for your time, just offering my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Anzavino. There's no additional comment from members of the public? The board is prepared to make a motion, or I guess we could close the public hearing initially and then? Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair, motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none on the motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
Motion to remove the article as mentioned by Joel Wall. I guess I'll leave it at that, article to remove it, the article.
Number 26.
Number 26, thank you, Mr. Wall.
26 from the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. Motion made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. O'Regan. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So with that, I think we will await the, um, outcomes of committee's work as they continue to, um, move forward.
Uh, Chairperson Howe, I'd like to thank you on behalf of our committee, uh, for doing this, uh, giving us the time. Uh, like a number of us have said, uh, at our own committee meeting, we just want to make sure that we get it done right for the people of Stoughton. We don't want to settle for anything. So I appreciate very much for your, the select board's time and, uh, consideration for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel, thank you to the project team again for being with us tonight. And we'll see you soon, hopefully with another update, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, does the board need to take any direction with respect to the RFP? Or is, is the manager, um, I don't see, I can't see her. Is the manager prepared to just move on that based on the discussion? I just don't know the answer to the question.
Um, let's see. Joel, you wanted to respond to that?
Well, I, I would just say that, uh, if anything, uh, Mr. O'Regan, I'd be willing to make a motion. If you want to make a motion, I will, uh, I will second it to instruct the town manager to take appropriate action to put out an RFP. Uh, this way here, there'll be no doubt in anybody's mind. It went through a proper vote and, uh, is the policy of the board that we do that, so.
If that's the motion, I second it.
That's the motion.
Okay. Motion to authorize, uh, the manager to move forward with the RFP as described. Being seconded, is there a discussion on that?
Madam Chair?
Sure, Mr. McCrisky?
Just my thoughts, uh, through you to the town manager is that, um, you know, use whatever language that you feel, uh, in conversations with, uh, Mr. Wall as the chair of the, uh, committee, uh, that we, um, just suit it, that, you know, we, we fill out what, whatever our options are. Let's, let's give it one last, look at everything, you know, turn it upside down, inside out. And, uh, you know, no piece of property is not worth submitting if somebody's interested.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no additional comments, I will call for a vote on this motion. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. That should conclude all the business for this item. Thanks again to everyone.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Next item is the town manager mid-year review. Um, so, uh, as the, the board knows, the manager, um, has a mid-year performance review on, that is to be completed by April 15th. So in order to not have this kind of fall by the wayside or happen at the last minute, which sometimes we are want to do as a, as a busy board of select people, um, I wanted to include this on the agenda and hopefully assign a couple of members, or maybe a couple of members want to volunteer to spearhead this process and work with the town manager, uh, to complete it. Um, so I see Ms. Roberts has raised her hand, so I think, um, if you'd like to chime in. Deborah, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind, uh, the board that, uh, when we gave town manager her previous evaluation, we set a template, a structure, a format that, um, that you agreed we were going, that it was pretty good. And, um, I would like to consider that and just populate it with, uh, the goals that we had discussed. And, uh, uh, Mr. O'Regan, uh, also had agreed to work on that and that was, um, back during the time that he were giving, uh, Dr. Graham her evaluation.
And, and Madam Chair, I think between Ms. Roberts and myself, we should be able to have that template, uh, available for the board if we're meeting next week. Uh, and, and Ms. Roberts has availability, we, we can put that together and, and get it out to the board to consider for next week.
Okay. And if you two are willing to kind of volunteer, I'd encourage you to maybe touch base with Dr. Graham to figure out kind of the scope of how you see this evaluation going. I know, um, with the previous one, we did a comprehensive annual review. Um, I think the mid-year review, maybe with that tool, will be, um, a little more streamlined, I guess, is my hope. That's the, that's the nice word I'll use to describe it, so. Yeah, we can put this on next meeting and maybe if, if you both want to touch base with the town manager, I don't know if I would want a motion to kind of assign you as, as the lucky two. We can do that as well, so. Members, how do you, how do you feel about that? Is that a good path forward? Joel?
Right now, I might be the only one. Uh, I won't be able to take part in that process, although I'd like to, uh, to, um, where my son is a town employee, uh, and under the direct supervision of the town manager and police chief. You know, I would have to be, preclude myself as much as I would like to sit on it. Uh, so it looks like, uh, you know, with everything going on, uh, it's been great for Ms. Roberts and, and Mr. Kaby. It seems like Mr. Kaby's always been nominated for stuff, but, you know, he really fits well on this one.
This one's Mr. O'Regan, so I'm on this one.
Yeah.
Steve, you have your hand raised?
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, uh, I recall, uh, at first being skeptical of, of the, uh, of the, uh, evaluation form that, uh, Ms. Roberts had suggested, this is before I got a chance to see it. But, um, when I, when I saw it, I was extremely impressed. I thought this was really gonna be helpful. It's gonna be a great way to, to, uh, to make a, um, uh, an evaluation that, that can be subjective and, and, uh, sorry, objective and also easy to track. So, uh, I, I think it's really wonderful. And I'm, I'm grateful that she, she had a chance to, to track it down, find it for us and bring it. Uh, I also think that, that as I recall, it, it won't take all that much work to, to, uh, hone it into something that will fit our, our specific, uh, needs. It's, it's pretty far along, so, uh, yeah, I definitely appreciate, uh, Ms. Roberts, uh, pursuing this, bringing it to us. And thank you, Mr. O'Regan, for, um, for helping out, uh, just get the language right with, uh, with Ms. Roberts. So, I don't know if we need a vote, but I, but I definitely support it, it was great.
Dr. Graham, does that sound like a good process forward, uh, to work with those two and, um, lay out the, how you see the, uh, you see the board working with you to do the evaluation and then maybe figure out the timing of when we could complete it?
Sure, I'm fine with however you want to go.
Awesome. Okay. So we'll, we'll add this to next week's agenda for an update, um, from Mr. O'Regan and Ms. Roberts, and keep going from there. Just didn't want it to fall off the radar, so, uh, happens often on this, this group, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Next item, um, we should open the warrant for special town meeting. Um, I included this on the agenda when originally, I'm gonna mute you. We included, um, included this on the agenda because we were looking at adding in the, a couple of articles, I believe primarily focusing on the downtown zoning rewrite for the special within the annual, as we were calling it. Um, our charter requires a special warrant, a special town meeting warrant to be opened for seven days and then, uh, needs to be closed and posted for 42 days ahead of, uh, when that meeting will take place. Uh, so kind of working backwards on the timeline. If we were to open a special today, uh, we'd have to close it, I believe, by the 23rd to meet the timing of the annual town meeting on May 3rd, uh, to have that special within the annual. So with that, I included on the agenda, I So with that, I included on the agenda, I know, um, the plan was to have a downtown zoning as the special article. And, uh, the town planner, John Chardan, is here to give us an up, a very brief update on, uh, the downtown zoning rewrite and to explain kind of his, the timeline and the process for that. Hopefully we can see. So, John, I'll give you, um, a quick update.
Great. Thank, thank you, Christine. Um, I'm just going to share my screen for a minute and do a very brief PowerPoint. It's only a few slides. Can everyone see this?
We can.
Yes.
Think, um, if you take it out of slideshow mode, we'll be able to shift through the slides. I think that's the same issue.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah, that, that.
Okay.
Do, um, feel the same. Yeah.
So I thought, um, as part of this brief presentation, I'd just give the, uh, the select board, uh, an update on where the project stands. Since the presentation by, uh, the consultants and myself on January seventh, um, the downtown task force and the planning board have been working diligently on finalizing the following aspects of the proposed bylaw. Dimensional regulations, parking regulations, the internal district boundaries, the sign regulations, and incorporation of downtown design regulations. The sign regulations have been particularly important because the way the sign bylaw is written in the current bylaws, it, it goes by the underlying zoning districts. Now that we are naming this as a new district, sub-districts, we needed to go through the sign regulations to make sure that what we're proposing fits the new template and the new regulations being proposed. So completion of these, uh, required some consultation with town council and will continue to need some, uh, coordination consultation going forward. Completion of the sub-district boundaries required a site walk that was held recently of the downtown area between the consultants and members of the planning board, the downtown task force and the working group. And obviously, I also was in, in attendance that day. So where it stands now is the consultants are currently working on implementing final edits from the planning board and the downtown task force as well as finalizing the three-D graphic that would be presented to illustrate the proposed dimensional regulations. The proposed sign regulations will be reviewed by town council to ensure the legality and public vetting will be conducted once the above steps are complete in accordance with the following timeline. This is the plan going forward into a fall town meeting. Uh, public forum number one would be held in mid to late April, once the final changes are made. An update will be given to town meeting at the annual town meeting on May third, then followed by a second public forum in early June two thousand twenty-one, taking into consideration comments received at the first public forum, knowing that the public has yet to see the draft bylaws. The last time the public participated in this was the survey back in the summertime. Planning board public hearing would be held on July twenty-second. Then a public information session, uh, to keep people informed, again, to gear up to a special timing in the fall would be, would be conducted in mid-September. Go before the finance committee and the standing committee on municipal regulations in late September, early October. Have a working session, an informational session with town meeting representatives in early October in preparation for a fall town meeting, potentially in early November. The idea of this timeline is to make sure that we are able to properly vet this through the public and through the pertinent municipal committees and, um, have a chance to implement any changes that come out of those comments, but yet keeping people aware and not having large gaps of time to allow people to, uh, forget about the, the Stone Center District bylaw. So I just wanted to summarize by saying that when the process began, when I went before the finance committee and we requested the money from town meeting and I was asked about the timeline, the projected timeline for completion of the bylaw was approximately one year. The first meeting of the working group was held on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty with the consultants. Therefore, as of two days ago, we just hit the ten-month mark into the process. So therefore, once the public forums are held in April and early June, it will be right about at the one-year point that was, that was, um, estimated or projected. The project has remained on schedule and within budget despite the COVID restrictions that came along and related delays. And if the board recalls, in a letter that was prepared by the planning board to the select board on February second, the planning board requested withdrawal of the article from the annual town meeting on May third to be presented at the fall special town meeting, and that was accepted. So that was the, that was the vision all along. Once we determined that there were things that still need to be worked on was a special time in the fall because even though the bylaw is close to being ready for public vetting, the public vetting has not really begun yet. It won't begin, it won't begin until, um, mid-April. So that's why the most reasonable timeline is to bring it forward to a special timing in the fall. And again, the development of this bylaw is still well within the one-year timeline that was prescribed and within budget. So certainly, work has progressed and I'm very pleased with the progress that has been made and that it stayed within budget and on schedule. So with that, that is the proposed timeline for this bylaw. So, um, at this point, again, without any public vetting taking place yet, um, my professional opinion is that, um, it, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be reasonable to have this included in a special town meeting within the annual, within the annual town meeting to, to present a bylaw that has yet to be publicly vetted and to, um, tell the public that, you know, here's our bylaw and it's going to be on a town meeting in three to four weeks. So we really need a chance to vet this publicly, see what people have to say and see what kind of comments, comments come back. So, um, that's it for my presentation, Madam Chair.
Thank you, John. I appreciate the, the update, um, to the board and presenting that timeline. Um, I know that the consideration of opening the warrant for special time meeting was specifically to include the Stone Center District bylaw in, in the annual essentially as, as best we could. So I think that, to me, is, is a, is a good clarifier as to where we are in the process and the readiness of that. I'm not sure, and this is maybe for members of the board, where to open a warrant if there's a timeline for when we have to close it. Um, it probably doesn't make sense to open a warrant for a town meeting we're going to have in five months. So with that, I'm, I'm not sure if there's a need to do that tonight. Do other members of the board have thoughts on this? I just wanted to, uh, okay, there's lots of thoughts. So, uh, Mr. McCrisky, your hand is raised first.
No, it's not. That's from the last time. I shall be.
So, all right. Uh, Mr. O'Regan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think that the, uh, timing for opening a warrant for a special town meeting that would appear to potentially include this bylaw change and, uh, finalizing a fire station would best wait when both projects look like they're on the glide path to being ready. And if everything goes, uh, as we hope for a late September, maybe special town meeting, then, you know, opening the warrant in early to mid August would appear to be the prudent thing to do. And that would also allow a fall town meeting to pick up work that, um, because of the current COVID environment, the annual town meeting might decide to defer.
Mr. Kaby?
I took a, uh, quick look into the charter and, um, I might have missed something, but, uh, from what I can tell, there isn't any upper limit on how long it can be open. It has to be open at least seven days, but there's no, uh, there's no time at which it must be closed by.
I'm, I'm not sure we want to just leave it hanging. Uh, it's a recipe for forgetting about it. But we can put a calendar reminder sometime early August to say, to make sure that we're, we're on schedule. But I think even with the schedule outlined, uh, by John showing all the public forums and outreach, that will keep the project in people's minds, so it won't get lost. And as Mr. O'Regan stated, um, if we have the fire station also imminent for the fall, um, this could be a nice, nice combination. So, um, there's nothing further on that. Um.
So, so Madam Chair, I'd just like to add this, you know, like I said, the progress has been very good on this bylaw, and I think that would be a prudent move because, you know, to use a football analogy, we're at the one-yard line. And, you know, I would not like to see the town fumble the ball at the one-yard line by, you know, by rushing this a little bit. So I think the public vet is, is going to be important throughout the spring and the summer, and I think that'll, that'll give this the best chance for success.
You don't want to do a Seahawk Super Bowl move, right, John?
Great. That's a, that's a good one.
And one thing we had talked about at the downtown task force meeting, um, one of the members, Tabor Keely, mentioned that when this type of bylaw change was approved in Milton, they did a few updates at their town meetings, um, which got the project in people's minds and helped remind them of it. So I think, um, we'll do a similar thing at our annual town meeting, give an update, uh, if possible. I think the moderator was on here somewhere, so that's a heads up, um, if there's time to do an update. And that way, folks know what to maybe anticipate, um, for public forums over the summer and then, uh, the proposed article for the fall.
That'd be, I think, Madam Chair, that would be a great timing because we will have had the first public forum by that time. And so anyone who wasn't able to participate in the first public forum, uh, will know that there's going to be a second one coming up shortly after town meeting.
Well, thank you again, John. I appreciate you staying on late.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the time. Thank you. Good night. Thanks, Robin.
There's nothing further on that. And we'll move forward to, um, article twenty-six of the twenty-seventeen annual town meeting. This was the South Coast Rail Consultant article, um, one hundred fifty thousand that expired per the sunset bylaw. Uh, and, uh, Mary Jane Martin, our assistant town accountant, is on the line to answer any questions if the board may have it.
So if I could, um, and Mary Jane can, can provide backup detail on this. Um, we basically would have until the end of this fiscal year to spend all of that money. Uh, I don't foresee that within the next few months, we're going to spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars on a consultant to fight the rail at this point. That in no way means that I do not think that we're going to have to fight this at some point.
So, Robin, could I interrupt just for one minute?
Absolutely.
So you don't have to actually spend all of the money. You have to contract for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then there must be, some work must be done before June thirtieth end. And they have to send us a progress billing to show that it's been started. And then I believe you have until the following June thirtieth of twenty-two.
I think the concern I have, thanks, Mary Jane. I think the concern I have is I don't know what we would contract someone for exactly at this point for the hundred fifty thousand. I'm not sure how I would commit to spending that right now. We can, I mean, we're going, we, we're going to need to. The question is, do we just put it on for a special if we need to look at it again? Do we, if in the short term, if we have to use money, do we just use funds that we may have if I have to spend twenty thousand dollars in the next two or three months to deal with something that crops up? Do I spend as I have it and then maybe go forward, look for stabilization money if it went further, or then borrow for a special town meeting? So basically, you know, realistically, can I bridge enough if I need to do something from now until an October town meeting, let's say? And I don't know what all of you are hearing about this. I do know there are hearings going on, public hearings in Taunton. So it's alive. I am concerned about some of the, um, federal packages. We talked about this the other day with, with an emphasis on railway and electrification and, and all of that. So there's, there's a concern, certainly. The question is, am I comfortable contracting, and, and Mary Jane, thank you, um, I don't have to actually spend those funds in June, but contract for them and commit to what I plan on spending them on. I'm just not sure we're ready for that.
Uh, my, my question is if, if we do contract and begins some kind of billing to author, you know, to show the work that would be initiated. Mary Jane mentioned that that would have, that initial kind of bill and, and, um, spending would have to take place ahead of the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two deadline. Would the funds then need to be extended again, uh, prior to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two? Would this, would this extension only be viable for one fiscal year?
I defer to Mary Jane. I don't know the answer to that.
So I'm actually looking at the chart that, um, Dylan and I came up with on all the articles that this takes place. So this was a seventeen article, so, um, you can extend it one more year. You would, yes, you would have to extend it again to go past June thirtieth, twenty-two.
And so each extension is just one additional fiscal?
One year. Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Um, I, I, I'm more concerned now than I was when we first took this up that, uh, we may wind up being caught unprepared and unaware, um, and, and, and literally be railroaded, uh, into this, uh, project. Sorry about that. And so I'll make a motion that we extend this article for one year.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
Motion made and seconded. Want to discussion? Mr. McCrisky?
Yes, I just want it made clear because I've heard several times in the sunset clause and the sunset, usually a sunset clause has a specific date on it. So there's nothing that prohibits us from using this money for the next year. And we'll discuss the, um, you know, the merits of using it and how much, but, uh, so we can do this. There's nothing that stops us. There's nothing hidden there. We can do this now. We hope to extend it and the money's good until, uh, for another year, so into twenty-twenty-two.
But I have to contract for the work by June of twenty-one.
Right. And, and, you know, if, and that shouldn't be a hard thing to do. I mean, there are people out there that are already working on it and it, uh, it would probably make sense to have some of those people working with us and not recreating a wheel. So, um, with that, um, I know that everybody got an email, uh, from Mr. Gito earlier, um, that was sent individually. Uh, and he poses a good question is to, um, how much are we really going to need, right? Now, we haven't needed it for recent years, but it's probably a good thing to be ready. Uh, so by extending it, uh, maybe extending only a portion of that, uh, and then see how the process plays out. Because, you know, it, it's, I really don't like kind of holding money over and over and over. I think it's a bad practice. Uh, but what, uh, Bob stated, you know, is that we don't want to be caught off guard. And, um, you know, we, there's maybe some happy middle there, you know? And, uh, if we were to do a portion of the money, that allows us to free up some money to be used in other areas, which we know we need. Uh, it can be re-appropriated or whatever, but, um, and then, you know, a year or two down the line, this, this project starts kicking up. We may have to come back and, uh, and ask for more. But I think the responsible thing to do is to just, you know, maybe appropriate enough money that allows us to not get caught off guard.
So I think, um, so this isn't necessarily extending the money. It's, it's extending the article that was voted. So I'm not sure if we can, we can, in our vote, kind of pare down the amount, but we could possibly request an update from the manager or something as it's, if it's starting to get spent or, uh, whatever it may be. So I think that might be a question for council in terms of how much we can restrict pending on an article.
Well, let me favor the article, and I think if anything, that's what we should do, is, is get that ruling and find out what our options are.
If I might, I, I, I absolutely agree. My concern is a hundred fifty is not a lot once we're into the fight. But in the short term upfront, without exactly knowing which fight I have on my hands, I don't feel confident if I have to contract a hundred fifty thousand of work. I can tell you by June, I could contract probably thirty-five thousand, twenty-five, thirty-five thousand of preliminary groundwork, find out what's going on, people doing the research on what the federal packages hold and getting people so that we're not caught, as Selectman O'Regan says, completely off guard. Um, yeah, I could bring in a consultant to do all the preliminary groundwork and that would be less. I just don't know. Mary Jane may know the answer. Can we lower the amount? Is it basically whatever I contract by June of twenty-one is what I have? Or do I have to do it all or nothing? I, I mean, I would love it if I could say, okay, you know, I'll, I'll contract thirty thousand, whatever I can contract by then legitimately and know that I'm using it for a legitimate purpose, and then that's what I get for the year. And then we go back if we need more. Uh, that, that seems reasonable. I just don't know legitimately what I would spend a hundred fifty thousand on right now. It may be in the next few months I can find out if, if, but it's a lot to commit to without being a hundred percent sure what my fight is, if that makes any sense.
Well, we'll have a special coming up.
That's what the special's for. Mr. Kaby? You're unmuted, sir.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, but also some comments. Um, first of all, you know, one of the, the benefit, potential benefits of, of letting this money go is that it can fill, uh, our current deficit in the, the, in the budget that is in front of FinCom right now. Um, how far is, how much? Um, how far is, how much, how large is that deficit right now?
Well, 300s, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Madam Chair, if you're with, the deficit right now is $524,000 plus.
Okay. With the, that was, uh, that, that is after, uh, the schools gave back $172,000, uh, correct?
It's not, it's not using the 177 and change to reduce it. That's the actual deficit.
Got it. Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
I, I, thank you for the insight. So the, when I look up, uh, the South Coast Rail, uh, Phase 1, and this is just from their website, they're looking at Phase 1, which extends, uh, a southern, sorry, secondary line west for the extending, uh, sorry, let me start again. Phase 1, extend a secondary line west for the existing Miraburro, uh, Lakeview Line. And, uh, create the New Bedford and Fall River Line. And that is looking to be completed by, uh, ideally the end of 2023. Uh, and the full build, as they describe it, is when they start to look at the, at the Stoughton Line. Um, you know, I guess there's all sorts of, 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 uh, posturing that can happen between now and 2023. But, uh, we're looking at the next three months, right, that this money would have to be, uh, it would have to be, uh, programmed for. We have to have some, some idea of where it's going within the next three months. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I, I, um, as much as I, I would hate to, to give up, uh, money, I, I, you know, things we might be able to use in case of emergency. Uh, when I just look at what in my own, I, I only kind of list, view, view the, uh, the wisdom of the majority on this. But, uh, if we are weighing what, what could possibly happen in the next three months against what we are most certainly sure is going to happen by the time we get to the budget done, uh, you know, I, I think this money could be better used. Just that, that deficit. Uh, that's just my own view on this. Um, I still see in the next three months, there being a significant risk that the South Coast Rail is going to point to suddenly resurrect itself. Uh, but, you know, I've been surprised in the past.
Mr. Oregan?
So I think, uh, I would rather use this money to plug the budget hole, uh, if, if we, if we know that the, um, that the window that Mr. Kaby is looking to is actually there. I do not trust the bureaucracy on the South Coast Rail. And I've been to too many meetings where this has been brought up, um, and, um, uh, we just need to be very cautious. My, my suggestion is that we vote to extend it. My understanding is that it's the article, not a particular dollar amount. And we can't slice down and say we only want to, uh, extend, say, $50,000 on it. That vote at least preserves the option. I, I think some outreach, and I'd be happy to do it, to, um, our state delegation to give us some better sense of where this project is. So that if, um, if it turns out that the window might permit this to be restored in a fall special town meeting, so that letting this lapse at this time is a prudent risk to take, the vote to extend it can be rescinded. Uh, but, um, um, you have had to have been to some of these meetings to understand the dedication of the bureaucracy to put this project through. Where could we spend this money? Well, one of the things in one of the bond authorizations for the South Coast Rail is a requirement that prior to the bond money being spent, uh, there needs to be, I believe, a study on depressing the rail going through Stoughton Center. That would require some engineering. Uh, we've got some preliminary sense of that from work, and I believe Mr. Tisdale was involved with some of that before. That would be an easy first pass on work to move that, uh, that aspect of it down. Because the risk to the Stoughton Center, as we're doing the bylaw revision, is that we have high-speed cantilevered trains bombing through, probably empty, right? Because that's the experience in the other, in the other, in the Green Bush. Um, electrified rails with cantilevered lines running through Stoughton Center at, at least 40, if not 60 miles an hour, uh, upwards of 40 times a day on double tracks. Um, and the, the, um, the bond authorization bill, which I don't believe has been spent yet, requires, you know, not tunneling, but, you know, basically digging and covering, uh, to depress, uh, through the square. So, so some preliminary engineering work on that option would be an easy first use of that money to present, tied into that bond, to that appropriation bond. That's just one thing to be looked at. Uh, so that's, that's how I think would be prudent. And then if we come back and the legis, and, and, and we get word that it's safe to let it go, um, then it'll be available to fund some of the shortfall this year.
Thank you, Mr. Oregan. I'm glad you brought up Green Bush, um, working in Weymouth. One of the projects I assisted with was a Massworks-funded project to daylight the Smel Brook in, uh, Weymouth Landing, or the Weymouth Braintree Landing. And that project cost over $3 million. It was originally supposed to be paid for out of the Green Bush mitigation monies. But the town only got a small chunk of funding. The project was impossible to complete. That money went to something else, and then the state and the town was putting in over $3 million for some mitigation, uh, per the Green Bush agreement. So I think that's a reflection of maybe not being prepared or as best prepared as they could have been, uh, in negotiating their agreement. And I would hate to see Stoughton in a similar position, um, costing taxpayers 20, 30, you know, 20, 15 years down the line. Um, I think the town meeting voted for this in 2017 so that we could be prepared and ready to jump on it when needed. Not ready to totally let it go. Um, I think if we extend it and hope we don't need it, um, it'd be great. But, you know, Congress has passed a huge stimulus bill, and who knows what kind of billions of dollars will be funneled into the state that could potentially jumpstart this project at any point. So, um, I think giving it another year is not, is not going to, um, break the bank. Uh, our deficit is bigger than just one hangover article from 2017 that we need to address. And the tax, you know, the town meeting appropriated this money for a reason, and I think that we should keep it for the reason that it was appropriated. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of extending this. Ms. Roberts?
Madam Chair?
I'm, I'm sorry. We're in, in the middle of a motion under discussion, so there won't be any public comment. Ms. Roberts?
Uh, yes, um, Madam Chair, I vote to extend the article as well. I agree with the, uh, previous speaker. I think we do need, I believe we do need, uh, a little more information before we can make a final, final decision. And I also question, is there a Stoughton representative on the South Coast Rail Committee that can also keep an eye on this? I, I hadn't heard about this committee or, uh, privy to updates, uh, on this committee for, for some time. But I thought maybe we would have a Stoughton member on that committee. Hadn't heard.
No, I don't, I don't think we have a staff person represented. I think by the time we discussed it, um, I think we were going to have a board member. I don't know if you were in, I thought, Ms. Roberts, you were interested in serving.
No, I was, the MBTA Advisory Board, which.
There's only a million, uh.
There's a million, right?
No, that's a good point. You know, the person could be contracted to, to stay apprised of those meetings. So, yeah, I think there's a variety of things, but.
Yeah, variety. But I am in favor of extending the article.
Any additional discussion on this from members of the board? I'm going to assume Mr. McCrisky has raised his leftover hand.
I will, I will find out more about that committee, Selectwoman Roberts, and find out if even a board, if it's not something that timewise works for a board member. If I need to sit on it or I need to have staff sit on it in some way or another. Um, I go to the MBTA meetings for the municipalities, so we keep track of the MBTA side of things. Um, but I can, uh, I, I think at this point, we should have more of a presence and, and, or a presence. Is, if this is ramping up because of the federal funding. That's really my concern as far as why I think the presence sooner rather than later for that purpose. Um, and Lord knows if Stoughton needs a big mouth, you have one. Yay.
All right. So there's no additional discussion. I'll call for a vote on the motion to, uh, let me just pull it up. To extend the deadline for commencing spending on Article 26 of the Annual Town Meeting of May 2017 until, um, June 30th, 2021, in accordance with the Article Sunset Bylaw. On that motion, Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Oh.
And I vote yes. Motion passes for yes, one no. Thank you, Mary Jane, for staying on so late. We appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, could I have one moment of privilege?
Sure. One very brief moment as we're approaching 10 o'clock on our open agenda. Who speaks?
Oh, I, I understand. Peter Murphy, I was the, I, I was the author of the article for the Sunset article. And just for clarification, the reason and the purpose I put that through was the fact that every, you would go and review your articles that have been open for three years. And again, the board can select to extend it for one more year. And which you, you, you just did, which was very good, but you've exten, uh, you, you review your articles, the money that's been out there. That was the whole intent of the article.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I think the bylaw is working.
Thank, well, thank you very much for the privilege. Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is an announcement from the chair. Um, I am the chair, so I'll make my announcement. I didn't want to say this under Selectwoman comments, uh, just to hopefully not lead to a big, uh, discussion or to-do ahead of the meeting. Um, but I am announcing that I will be resigning from the board, uh, effective, I believe, March 26th is the date. Um, I have accepted a new opportunity in, uh, Pocatello, Idaho. Uh, so I will be relocating and moving, uh, out of town. And even though these meetings are virtual, um, can't quite be a good representative of Stoughton if you're no longer a resident of Stoughton. So this is kind of a little ahead of the, of the original timeline I had planned and, um, a little ahead of schedule. Um, but it was an opportunity that I didn't want to pass up and would join my partner out there, who moved out there in August. So I'm looking forward to that. And, um, it's definitely bittersweet and a little bit, um, sad, of course. Um, but I'm excited for this next step in life and really appreciate having been on this board, been entrusted with being an elected member of the community from the residents. I hope I've, uh, you know, not only made my parents proud, but maybe the residents of Stoughton proud in, in serving. Um, I've truly enjoyed it, and it's, um, it's definitely, as I said, a bittersweet moment for me. But I'm looking forward to the next adventure, and I hope, uh, to transition smoothly out of this role. And I know the board is in good hands with, with the folks currently serving, uh, including our amazing town staff. So, um, I just, uh, with that, I, you know, I'm not sure what else to say, but I just want to thank my fellow board members. And, um, I'll be here for next week, but, uh, that'll, that'll be my last meeting. So, um, again, I appreciate everything and, um, you know, that's, that's, this is, this is tough. This is harder than I thought it would be on a, on a screen. Um, but, um, Stoughton's in great hands, and, and I know you guys will continue to do good work. And I keep saying, if, if Idaho's terrible, I'll, I'll come back. And, uh, I know this town will be here to welcome me back. Um, can't replace 29 years of, of living here, and, um, it's, it's always going to be home. So, um, that's, that's it. Thank you. Um, we do have a consent agenda in executive session.
Well, can we say we're going to miss you or, you know, something? You're like, we don't do enough of that. Yeah. Good job. You've been great here.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
So it's, um, it's, it's hard, uh, but.
And we can't even give you a going away party.
Yeah, worst part.
Right.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, um, it's, I guess it's a strange time to have to say goodbye to people. Um, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful with the future of this town, uh, based on the work that this group's done. And, and I look forward to seeing it continue to thrive. So when I come back to visit, we better have a new fire station. Come, just kidding.
Our heads are going to roll, right?
Idaho. Idaho. That's, you know, if you hear something like this, you're hoping it's like, you know, move to New York City, or we'll be living in a penthouse. Idaho. Lots of fields out there.
Yeah, you know, I'm a bit of an outdoor enthusiast, so, uh, it's my New York City for those city dwellers, you know? Running, climbing and mountain biking, um, you know, that's, that's going to be my playground. So I'm definitely, uh, looking forward to it and looking forward to learning, um, about, you know, the, the government there, um, and having a new experience in life in a new place. Um, I've always enjoyed, you know, municipal government and, and look forward to kind of dive in and taking that on out there as well. So, um, it's, you know, the, the nerdy municipal government nerd in me is, is really excited about that, too. So, uh, mo, most people don't, uh, don't think about that in their move, but I, I, I'm hoping to learn a lot and, um, just broaden my experience and, and knowledge as well. So, um, might be able to bring it back to Stoughton and, uh, maybe for the better, and we'll, we'll see where life takes me, so.
Let us know if they pay out there with local government, or it's another. He might move out there with you.
That kind of gets the deal big.
Christine, I'd say myself, it's, uh, it's, it's been an honor to serve with you. And, um, we've disagreed on a couple of issues, but you've always been respectful and, and pleasant in those. And, uh, I've always said, uh, that some people don't like the term, but I always say that when we serve in local government, it's basically a collision of ideas. And, um, I mean, hell, Bob and I agree on some things, you know, so. We still do. I mean, you know, people talk about it, but we still come here and agree. Uh, so it's, it's possible that, uh, and, and that's what I think that, uh, the chat has stood for, is to bring people together with diverse views and not to be voting as a block and, uh, to bring those ideas. And you've done that, and we've had great conversations, uh, with the brief time that I've served with you. But, uh, I've said to anybody that will listen, you are an impressive young lady, and, uh, you're going places in life. And, uh, I guess I could say that because my son's your age. And, uh, I, so that's what I don't like admitting that I'm of that age now. Um, but to watch my son achieve as you are is, is a great thing. Uh, so keep up the good work, and, uh, anything that you set your mind to and confident, you're going to achieve.
Absolutely.
Yes. And, and Joe, I had the same thought, but she's talked about it, hoping her parents would be proud because it dawned on me, I'm probably as old, if not older than her mom. And I, if she was my daughter, I could tell you I'd have been extraordinarily proud. Uh, and I, and I want to thank you for being part of the team that gave me the opportunity to come to Stoughton, uh, chair in one house. And it's been a pleasure to work with you, uh, to watch you grow in your role. Um, it's been a pleasure, and, uh, I, I want to thank you, but I wish you all the best out in that beautiful part of the country.
Thank you, Dan. If you ever want to visit with the cow and the dogs and the horses.
We've been extraordinarily lucky to have, have, uh, you be on this board. Uh, and just to get to know you personally has been, uh, a wonderful experience. Uh, thank you very much for taking, taking the time to, to run here, to help us out and, uh, and to, to, um, you know, use so much of your, your free time for the benefit of your community. Uh, Pocatello's extremely lucky to have you, and, uh, that our gain is certainly our loss. But, uh, but at the same time, uh, I'm really glad that you're founding, you're, you're finding a path. It's, uh, it's, it's your, that's your own and that, um, and you're, and you're kind of brave enough to, to, to go out there, do an area where you really don't know very many people, just, you know, a handful, and, and just make it happen. So, but best of luck. Uh, I know you'll, I know you'll, uh, you'll do well. You always do. And, uh, hopefully, uh, when you're in town, just, you know, remember, look us up. Drop us a line. Let us know when you're, when you're swinging around. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, Christine, I just can't thank you enough for all you've done, uh, on the board. The practical knowledge of how to make local government work that you bring from not only your training, but the positions you've had. Uh, you know, those of us who've been able to serve with you have watched you move from one position to another and now a third. Um, and I think we've all seen as you've grown and.
all seen, as you've grown in your career, your contribution to the town through this board has also grown. So, you know, if you can send us a potato or two once in a while, remember, that would be great. But I just can't thank you enough for all you've done and to wish you really well. I have two children who are, I think, bracketing you in age. And it's just great to see you. It's sad to see you leave and great to see you move on, who are obviously, you see you're going to be happier and more room to grow. And no one can ask, I hope you consider us all friends. I think all of us, as your friends, can't wish for better for another colleague than than what you have ahead of you. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Bob. All right, enough of that.
And we have another meeting where we can do this all over again.
All over again, right?
We have a consent agenda and executive session to get to. So, you know, you have to deal with me for a little bit longer. But thank you all for those those remarks. It's it really means a lot. I've been a very, very fortunate person and grateful for everything. So I can't say it enough. Thank you. All right, consent agenda. We have four items tonight. Item A is the payroll and bill warrants and any other documents to come before the meeting. Item B is to approve invoice seven in the amount of $33,543 for disbursement to be made from the CPA housing account under the COVID-19 Emergency Housing Fund Program. Item C is to approve our open session minutes of February 16, February 23, March 1, and March 2 of 2021. And item D is to approve the lease agreement for community fields for Stoyak slash Pop Warner. Would anybody like to pull any items from the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion to approve consent agenda made and seconded. On the motion. Yes. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The board also has an executive session tonight. Item A is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Police Supervisors Union pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 2093. Item B is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Professional Administrative Union, SBA, and the Town Hall Associates Union, SBA, pursuant to also General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. Item C is to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 for the town clerk. And item D is to approve executive session minutes of March 1, 2021, and March 2, 2021. I make it a finding that it's against the town's negotiating and litigating position to discuss these matters in open session, and therefore they should be discussed in executive session. A motion to enter into the executive session for the reasons as stated.
So wait.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaby?
Yes.
I vote yes. We will adjourn from the executive session, and we will not return to the open session. The next meeting of the board is next Tuesday, March 23. Happy St. Patrick's Day to folks tomorrow, and we'll see you all next week. Thanks.